Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I can ask you all to take your seats so we can start on time this evening. We have a quorum already, which is a fabulous thing. I'm really happy that so many people have come this evening. But before we begin, I just want to recognize a couple of elected officials in the audience and give them the opportunity to speak for a few minutes before we get into the rules of town meeting and the formality. So this evening, we have with us Congressman Lynch and Representative Dougherty, both in the in the front row down right here in front of me, and they each would like to speak for a short period of time. Congressman?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Welcome, and thank you for attending town meeting. I know there are quite a few items on the warrant, so I'll abbreviate my remarks. I just wanted to give you an update on what's going on in Washington and also some of the impact that our action in Washington is having directly on the town of Eastern. I want to welcome Representative Carol Dougherty as well, and I understand that Senator Timmeltie and Representative Cassidy are on their way, but it's a pleasure for me to be with you. I am very happy. We're sort of totaling the amount of federal funding at this point. Some of it is ending depending on the program, but other is other funding from the federal government is is just arriving. So very pleased to see that Eastern was able to receive $2.2 million from the CARES Act. That's pretty much exhausted. That was because of lost revenue and and impact, health impacts on the town of Eastern during the pandemic. But after that, we understand that the town of Eastern will receive about $2.6 million when it's all in from the American Rescue Plan Act as well, for a total of 4.8 million of federal funding. And that will, that is discretionary in large part to how the priorities are seen by local government. So local government has total discretion on how to spend that within certain limits. And I want to say, I had a chance last month to, Connor Reed invited me out to see the PFAS facilities, the three that are brand new, I guess there's four now, but when I was out there, there were there are only three in existence. And I just want to say that on two points. One, Washington looks very closely at how towns spend their money and what they spend it on, and if they do so efficiently. I have 18 towns and three cities in my district, and the job that the town of Eastern and your your leadership did in terms of addressing the PFAS problem, and I've got a bunch of towns that are impacted similarly to Eastern, but I do survey how much people spend in each town. And the town of Eastern spent less than half, less than half of the amount that some other towns spent to get more benefit in terms of drinking water supply purified and addressing PFAS than than some of these other towns. So that's to the credit of your leadership here in the town of Eastern, and I give them great credit for allowing me to go back to Washington and show how efficiently the town of Eastern is is managed, because we will be going back to the federal government for more funding for various projects that we have ongoing here in the town of Eastern. In fact, the town of Eastern used $2 million of the federal APRA funds for the filtration plants construction on PFAS, which is a great example of how our towns continue to use federal resources for worthwhile projects. Eastern also received over $5.7 million from a grant program funded by the bipartisan infrastructure law, this is a separate law, to complete corridor updates on Route 138 and the and intersection improvements at Washington and Elm Street. So I'm very pleased to announce that Eastern will also receive $200,000 from the federal funding for a new safety, public safety facility. So that's a, that's a result of what they call community priority funding. It's, in the olden days, Congress would just send the money to the governor and to the legislatures, and they would, they would decide what to spend money on. We changed that about eight years ago, and now the request actually has to come from the local community. And and we feel that no one knows better what the town of Eastern needs than the local residents and and your leadership at the local level. So this was a hard-fought win. I want to thank for the partnership that we received here, Connor Reed and and all of the leadership, the Board of Selectmen as well, in terms of focusing on the problems that need to be addressed. And I'm also grateful from the partnership I have at the federal level with with Senator Markey and Senator Warren. When I sponsor something and it passes the House, there's still more work to be done. It has to go over to the Senate, and Senator Warren and Senator Markey fought to keep the money in on the Senate side of the House, and and eventually it was signed by the President, so we're very grateful for that. And as well, your local state representatives have a have a role to play in this as well, and and they fully supported the way the money was being spent and spent, and and also supported the priority funding. That's about it in terms of Washington, and I just want to say, this is where democracy starts, right here at the grassroots level. So I know how important town meeting is to this whole political process and and democracy itself. I want to thank you for for allowing me to serve the town of Eastern in the United States Congress. May God continue to bless Eastern, and may he also bless these United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. Representative Dougherty?
You know, the the old saying, it takes a village, it takes a village to get the representative ready to say a few words as well, so. I am always delighted to be in your company, representing the town of Eastern as well as the city of Taunton. Representing the town of Eastern is one of my greatest delights as representative of the Third Bristol District, and that's not all of Eastern. It is 4A, if you're in 4A, I'm yours. If you are in 5, I am even more yours, and if you are in 6, therefore. So 4A, 5, and 6. But that doesn't mean that the rest of you who live elsewhere in the community aren't able to reach out to me and Representative Cassidy, of course, Senator Timmeltie as well, for any kind of support and help. Your agenda tonight is quite full, as the Congressman has indicated, and so I will try to make my remarks very brief. This is the time of year when we all face challenges of making a budget that our communities, and the challenges are at the federal level, they're at the state level, and for you here tonight, they are at the local level as well. And these decisions around budget particularly are made through the lens of what we perceive as high costs, diminishing resources, the constraints continuing of Proposition Two and a Half, and we are concerned, therefore, about cuts in programs and personnel, particularly at the local level. The House has just completed its deliberations on the state budget. The Senate is now seated deliberating at their level on the state budget, but the most important touch point for that budget is the Conference Committee, but we can talk about that when that time comes very shortly. And somehow, you will learn tonight with good leadership and careful planning that it all works out in the end. These moments that you have looking forward for your community, and for me particularly, also require looking back to be reflective about what has happened here in this past year. Take a moment, before you delve into the fiscal '25 budget, to reflect on what it is that you see around you. Eastern's accomplishments. First, at the school level, and there are accomplishments, though stress and pain, making the school budget, opening of the brand-new, beautiful Blant James Elementary School for those little guys, it's the best facility that I have seen in the Commonwealth. The courts at the high school are brand-new this year, and Richardson has a new playground. As the Congressman has pointed out, the PFAS water treatment plant, the mitigation of PFAS, is complete or near-complete for the protection of the community, its children, and its families. The public safety facility is moving forward. $10 million worth of infrastructure work is ongoing, and you can see that as you drive around the community. And I participated in the ceremony, among other things, for the dedication of the New Civil War Monument. And as for me, as my part, for my part as your state representative, I look to you, I look to the Select Board, I look to the town administrators to help to clarify my thinking about what it is that I need to do at the state level. I'll give you an example, a very clear example. For the past two years, when it gets to be budget time, when it gets to be my opportunity to present proposals for earmarks for the communities in the Third Bristol District, I reach out to the Select Board, I reach out to Connor and anyone else, frankly, who will stand still long enough to share some ideas with me. And it is over the last two years that the concerns over Chapter 70 funding for our schools has grown and grown, because Eastern, as you probably know, is a minimum aid community. This year, the per pupil allotment offered in the governor's budget was $30 a pupil. Right now, in fiscal '24, it's $60. But the governor put forward $30. And we figured that we would end up recommending to the Senate that it would be $60, just like it is this year, because we hear talk at the state level of diminishing resources as well. But it didn't turn out that way. What has gone forward to the Senate is $101 per pupil. And you know what that means for Eastern? And I think, and Connor will correct me, I'm sure, that currently with $60 per pupil, you get an additional $100,000 in Chapter 70 funding. That $101 means about $350,000. That's a considerable increase for school aid for this community. And as a result of that, I proposed an amendment to the budget that calls for a working group to come together to look at the way in which we distribute Chapter 70 money. So for towns like Eastern, and there are about 215 towns that are small and rely predominantly on property tax, federal funding, state funds as well, to help to support the town budget, I propose that we have a working group to study the distribution of educational funding. Well, it didn't go forward in the, as an outside section in the budget, but it met with great positive response, because I called around to the Superintendent's Association, to the School Committees Association, to the MMA, to the MTA, to the AFT, all the stakeholders who are concerned about school aid and quality education for our kiddos across the Commonwealth. I propose that I'm going to put that forward in the new session upcoming for the next fiscal year, so wish me well on that. And further, for my part, in my short tenure, two years, four years, and six months as state representative, at the end of the day, I have brought $25,000 to Raising Multicultural Kids, $75,000 this year in this year's budget for Swift Park to improve that park for the town of Eastern, along with Representative Cassidy. Last year, $100,000 for the Fire Department, and the representative has put forward successfully another $100,000 for the Fire Department here, and $50,000 for school upgrades, particularly for safety and security of the doors in the schools last year. I'm very proud and pleased to be able to do that, and that's like tiny amounts of money, but it means a great deal for the budget that you are considering here in the community of Eastern. But most importantly, it is for me, as your state representative, to be present, to be available, and to listen very carefully to what you have to say about your wants and your needs for this community. Enough of me. You've heard it all for the moment. You should get on, of course, with the business of the day, some very, very important and critical issues for you to deliberate going forward for the town of Eastern, for the well-being of you, for your families, and for the future of Eastern. So I thank you for the time. I hope I haven't taken too much, and I am looking forward to the conversation this evening.
Thank you, Representative Dougherty. So good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Eastern's annual town meeting. I'm your town moderator, Kate Welch. Seated up here on stage, with me just some brief introductions, is Town Council to my immediate right, Jay Talerman, and on his right is our town clerk, Danielle Sicard. As you're seated and waiting for the town meeting to begin, I just want to go over some basic guidelines. As everybody knows, our bylaws dictate that we require a quorum of 100 in order to begin town meeting, in order to continue through town meeting, all the way through the end of the warrant. We are well beyond that at 369, which is great. I really thank everybody for coming out tonight. There have been town meetings, as most of you know, when we're waiting and waiting and waiting till 20 after, 25 after, to get the 100, so thank you all. Seated on the floor in front of me, in the table on, in the floor in front of me, is our members of the Select Board. The board members will be presenting the articles and making recommendations on those articles. Seated also at the table on the floor to my left is the members of the Finance Committee. They will also be making recommendations on articles. Also, in the audience down in front, there are school committee members, department heads, and other committee members who are here to answer any questions that anyone has and to help us make good decisions for our town. If you're a registered voter, make sure that, please make sure that you checked in. Everybody who's a registered voter should have an orange card. The orange cards become extremely important when it's time to vote. If you're not a registered voter, you're still welcome to stay here and and listen to the town meeting. There's a section right here to my right in the very front for non-registered voters. Before we begin, I just want to go over some rules regarding the meeting itself. Please remember that our town meeting is run by town meeting time, and we follow rules of parliamentary procedure, as well as the bylaws and our town charter. There's a glossary of terms provided in the back of your warrant if you need to refer to them and review those terms, motions, et cetera. This meeting is being recorded by ECAT for people to view at home, and so it can be also viewed in the future. So importantly, our town clerk, Danielle Sicard, is making an official record of this meeting. She'll be recording names and addresses of individuals who want to speak or make motions, and she also records the votes on any of the motions and the articles as we go forward. So to the voting citizens, you have the right to speak after the presentations, after the articles are read and defined, and the motions are defined. If you want to speak, there are two microphones in the walking area between the mezzanine and the orchestra level. I ask that you go up to the microphone, and please tell us your name and your address before you speak. Before you get up to the microphone, there are a few rules. The first one is, make sure you gather all of your thoughts, and you get up to the microphone, again, name and address. You're only going to be allowed to speak once on any given article, one time on any given article. And make sure that your comments have to do with that article. As voting citizens, again, you'll remember that, please keep your comments and your concerns to the article that we're covering. There's no set time limit, however, I am going to reserve the right, I do reserve the right, to stop if somebody, if they're speaking and I feel like they're out of line or they're getting off topic. And again, remember, just once on any given article. All speakers will be treated with courtesy by the moderator and everyone else in the room. No speaker will be allowed to use the meeting for personal attacks on any individual. All remarks will be directed towards me. Cross-examination will not be allowed. If you wish to make an amendment on any motion, it has to be done in writing. If you have nothing to write on, we have amendment documents or papers up here if you need to want to fill out an amendment. Voting again is done by a show of hands. I'll ask you to raise your orange card if you're voting for something, and then raise your orange card if you're voting against something. Again, it's very important, because the voting is, that's how we do it, and it's either majority, two-thirds, and in this situation, this evening, there's one article that requires a four-fifth vote. I will recognize motions to move the question, but if, in my opinion, there are still people waiting to speak who may add to the discussion, I again will exercise my authority not to accept the motion at that time. Okay. So the clerk has confirmed that there's, that the return of the warrant is in order, and we have a quorum. I'm just going to ask everybody to rise, and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Today is Monday, May 20, and it is now 7:22, and the annual town meeting for the town of Eastern is called to order. Article number one, Select Board Member Folgenetti.
I move that the town vote to accept the reports of the Select Board, Town Administrator, Assessors, Board of Health, Town Clerk, Treasurer, Collector of Taxes, School Committee, Town Accountant, Director of Public Works, and other departments, boards, and committees of the town. By way of explanation, this is an annual vote to accept the town report. Hard copies of the town report will be available at voter check-in. The Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee. Any comments, questions, or concerns relative to Article number one? Okay, seeing none, all of those in favor, please raise that orange card. This is a simple majority vote. All of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article number one passes by a majority. Article number two.
I move that the town vote to authorize the total expenditures pursuant to General Law Chapter 44, Section 53E and a Half, for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, to be expended in accordance with said bylaws pertaining to the revolving funds as printed in the warrant. By way of explanation, this article sets the annual spending limits for all revolving funds established pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 44, Section 53E and a Half. Actual expenditures cannot exceed the balance in this fund, even if the expenditures are less than the established limits. The Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee. Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article number two? Okay, seeing none, all of those in favor of Article two passing, again, this requires a simple majority vote, please raise your orange cards, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article two passes by a majority. Article three.
I move that the town vote to fix the salary and compensation of all elected officers of the town as provided by Section 108 of Chapter 41 of the General Laws as printed in the warrant. By way of explanation, this is an annual article required by statute to set the salary levels for all compensated elected officials. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee. Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article three? Seeing none, all of those in favor of Article three passing, please raise those orange cards. Again, this is a simple majority vote. All of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article three passes by a majority. Article four.
Good evening, and thank you for coming tonight. I move that the town vote to appropriate by transfer from water surplus the sum of $14,968 to pay the cost of a bill incurred in the prior fiscal year. By way of explanation, this article allows for the payment of a prior-year bill from Clean Harbors discovered after the close of the fiscal year and requires a four-fifth majority.
Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee. Any comments, questions, concerns relative to Article number four? Okay, seeing none, this article requires a four-fifth majority. All of those in favor, please raise those orange cards, and all of those opposed, please raise those orange cards. And Article four passes by the four-fifth majority. Article five.
I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $45,000 to supplement the following fiscal year 2024 budgets. Fire Department, $6,000. Solid Waste and Recycling Enterprise, $39,000, for a total of $45,000. And to meet this appropriation, $6,000 shall be transferred from free cash, and $39,000 shall be transferred from solid waste and recycling surplus. By way of explanation, this article supplements fiscal year '24 budgets to cover grant-matching funds and additional costs associated with increased enrollment in the town's solid waste and recycling program. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee. Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article number five?
I don't know. What this would do is take revenue that was received in this fiscal year and supplement costs incurred in the same fiscal year. So we have to forecast out what we think the enterprise fund will take in and spend in a given year, and subscribership has grown, and so there's a commensurate increase from what we thought we would bring in that will match this expenditure increase. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article number five? Okay, seeing none, Article five requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor of Article five, please raise that orange card, and all those opposed, please raise the orange card. And Article five passes by a majority. Article six.
Bear with me, this is a lengthy one. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $107,412,965, of which $94,199,801 shall be raised from taxation, $1,570,000 shall be transferred from free cash, $430,000 shall be transferred from the American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal fiscal recovery funds, $756,556 shall be transferred from the stabilization fund, $150,000 shall be transferred from the opioid settlement revolving fund, $35,000 shall be transferred from the betterment receipts reserved for appropriation, $4,576,869 shall be transferred from water enterprise receipts, $1,148,827 shall be transferred from water surplus, $839,844 shall be transferred from sewer enterprise receipts, $383,460 shall be transferred from sewer betterment receipts reserved for appropriation, $188,111 shall be transferred from district improvement financing funds. from district improvement financing funds. Two million, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars shall be transferred from solid waste and recycling enterprise receipts. And seven hundred thousand dollars should be transferred from cable franchise and related revenue enterprise receipts, all to meet the town charges, including the salaries of several elected and appointed officers of the town for fiscal year 2025 as printed in the warrant under article six. I'm sorry, okay. Thirty-five thousand dollars should be transferred from the planning board review fee revolving fund. Two hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars shall be transferred from septic betterment receipts reserved for appropriation. Four million, five hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars shall be transferred from water enterprise receipts. And one million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars shall be transferred from the water surplus. I apologize.
Second.
This is the annual operating budget of the town. The town administrator will make a brief presentation at town meeting regarding this proposal.
Good evening, friends. Thank you all for attending town meeting tonight. My name is Connor Reed. If you haven't met me yet, I'm your town administrator. I'm pleased to provide what I promised to keep to a ten-minute presentation regarding our operating budget for fiscal twenty-five. The coming fiscal year will usher in a period of change for cities, towns, and school districts around the Commonwealth as pandemic-era federal funds expire and the cumulative impact of years of inflation hit our operating budgets. Health insurance, school transportation, special education, and other fixed costs have grown by millions in Easton alone in fiscal twenty-four and twenty-five, leaving fewer dollars remaining of recurring revenue to fund operating needs for town and school departments. This challenge is not unique to Easton. As if you follow any of the regional press or what's going on in our neighboring communities, you will see that communities around the Commonwealth faced with similar fixed cost growth and expiration of funds have resorted to service cuts, layoffs, and overrides this spring to make up that gap. Thankfully, due to years of careful planning and building our reserves here in Easton with the repeated support of voters at town meeting to do so, Easton is not yet in such dire straits as some of our peers. And while the fiscal twenty-five budget is certainly strained by fixed cost pressures, it avoids draconian cuts to personnel and services by tapping a responsible amount of the stabilization funds that we have built up. Our general fund revenue, so it's composed primarily of property tax and then state aid and local receipts, will grow by five point seven percent next year for a total of ninety-nine point nine million. State aid continues to lag behind property taxes and local receipts from a growth perspective, forcing the reliance on stabilization funds to balance the budget. Now, that last part regarding state aid may seem discordant with press coverage that we've all seen and heard since the beginning of a pandemic, what some folks like to call all the money. Headlines abound about historic growth in tax revenue, unprecedented year-over-year investments in certain critical programs like chapter seventy, which is how the state funds K-12 education in Massachusetts. And yet, if any of you have weathered a budget presentation of mine before, you've heard Easton say we have a structural revenue problem. So how can both of those things be true? Well, the headlines about state funding of education increasing are true, and the Commonwealth should be applauded for their investments baked into the chapter seventy education funding program for the state. It's not disputable that the state is spending more than ever on K-12 education around the state, and that's a good thing. However, as Representative noted, Easton and now two hundred-plus other communities are not necessarily the benefactor or the recipient of those increases to the broader chapter seventy program. And that's because Easton is what's called a minimum aid community, where the state funding formula determines that regardless of how much the overall chapter seventy spending program is going to increase that year, your district will receive by statute thirty dollars of new revenue per pupil. So in Easton, that's roughly one hundred thousand dollars of new revenue per year for a fifty million dollar school district. For folks who are mathematically inclined, it's a quarter of one percent. Thankfully, this coming year is the best chapter seventy proposal that Easton has received because our partners in the House and Senate have tripled that minimum aid or more than tripled it to over one hundred dollars, which is a very positive step in the right direction. However, it can't on its own offset fifteen years of history where we have been looking at sub-one percent increases to our second-largest category of revenue, and that's how you go as the slide on screen shows, from a district where approximately a third of its costs are funded by this critical state program to about twenty-two percent today. Another critical component of state aid is called unrestricted general government aid, which rolls off the tongue, it's belovedly called UGA. That provides aid to local governments. This program was cut deeply in the wake of the two thousand and eight recession, and as you could see on this graph, it's never recovered even in nominal dollars. When you adjust for inflation, the picture with unrestricted aid is even more bleak, where we've lost roughly thirty-two percent of the purchasing power that this program once had back in two thousand and eight. None of this is new information, but it's worth highlighting tonight because these dynamics posed real challenges to the town of Easton before we went through what we've all collectively lived through of nearly twenty percent cumulative inflation. And so as we head into what will be some challenging budget cycles, reserves that we've built up are going to play a vital role in closing that gap. The fiscal twenty-five budget is going to mark for first significant use of stabilization funds in Easton in many years. Approximately eleven percent of that fund's six-point-nine-million-dollar balance will be tapped this year. Coupled with free cash, the amount of over one-point-five-million, local reserve use will reach two-point-three-million in fiscal twenty-five. These reserve funds have been deliberately and reliably built up for a difficult budget cycle for a rainy day, so to speak, which has now arrived, and their use is warranted and appropriate under town policy. That said, reserves used to close today's gaps can't fix structural challenges that we face, and they also guarantee a commensurate shortfall that we can and should count on next year. In total, our general fund revenue is forecasted at ninety-nine point nine million in fiscal twenty-five. Touching briefly on enterprise revenue, that's revenue from used-based services like water, sewer, trash, recycling, that will grow from nine to ten million in the coming year. This is largely attributable to growing subscribers for the trash and recycling program, as well as to the ongoing PFAS removal treatment costs for the water division. The total appropriated revenue next year, including general fund and enterprise, will increase to one hundred and seven million, four hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five as printed in the warrant. Moving on to talking about the expenditure side of the budget, our general fund expenditures will grow next year by five point seven percent. You'll see that the largest growth category there is fixed costs. I'd like to talk about that very briefly. So fixed costs include things that are not immediately within our control. These include things like debt service, employee healthcare premiums, liability insurance premiums. Anyone who's had to renew homeowner's insurance knows that these things can jump dramatically. The same is true when you're insuring hundreds of millions of dollars of public facilities. We've been able to moderate fixed cost pressures for years here in Easton with health insurance, incentive plans, solar power purchase agreements, and regionalizing public services. Unfortunately, the coming fiscal year is just not a good year with fixed costs. Healthcare premiums are forecasted to increase by nearly ten percent. That is almost a one-million-dollar increase to the town's budget right out of the gate that we have to fund, that is not funding going to school departments, town departments, roads, so, and that's, that's a real challenge. In total, our fixed costs in fiscal twenty-five are growing at more than double the rate that they did in twenty-four, and that really strains our operating budget. So these cost pressures on our operating position forced some tight budgets for the town and school departments, reducing staff through attrition and across-the-board expense budget cuts. But thankfully, the budget is balanced without resorting to any involuntary layoffs or major program cuts. However, the pressure that we face in fiscal twenty-five is just the latest in a longer saga, following years of reducing our operating margins, resulting in extraordinarily lean staffing and total budget levels for all of our town and school departments. This has been repeatedly demonstrated by numerous internal and external assessments and audits, the most recent of which you see on screen. Using the same communities that was selected by the operational audit funded by town meeting in twenty-seventeen, you could see that our per capita spending in town and school departments lags our peers, depending on which department, by five percent to fifty-two percent below average for all of our departments. Our per capita expenditures are either last or second-to-last among our peers in nearly all of our town and school departments. Despite a population that's within one percent of our peer economic group average, Easton's total budget's fifteen percent smaller than the amount spent by those communities, and our per capita spending is sixteen percent below the average spent in those communities. The disparity between our spending and that of our peers has grown over time. This information is highlighted tonight not to evoke despair or to suggest that programming in Easton is inadequate or that we don't have a great community with great services and great schools. I don't think anyone likes to come to town meeting and hear someone in a suit get up and explain how somehow one hundred and seven million dollars is not enough money to do anything good, because that is not true. Our departments across the board do a great job with fewer resources comparatively than their peer agencies, and that they stretch the lean budgets afforded to them farther. I also think it's important to highlight this to demonstrate a point that the challenges that any one department faces as far as the investment level that this community is able to afford is not from an overinvestment somewhere else in the ledger, because all of these departments are doing more with less. This is stemming from structural revenue challenges. This is true for all of our town departments, and it's true for the Easton public schools. I'd like to invite Superintendent Dr. Cabral up to briefly speak about the public schools' budget.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. I'm Alicia Cabral, Superintendent of Schools, and I would just like to go over how this manifests for the school budget. The town talks about per capita expenditures, and the verbiage we use in education is per pupil expenditures. So as you can see, per pupil spending is the apples-to-apples metric that measures spending per student per year. The most recently available data from DESI shows that EPS is among the lowest in our DART districts. DART are the districts that represent who the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or DESI, compares Easton to relative to academic achievement. This also shows the average of the state per pupil spending. You can see that across the districts that the Department of Education compares achievement to with Easton, we are very low in our per pupil spending, and in fact, almost four thousand dollars less per student than the state average. We consistently outperform the state on every indicator, and we don't typically measure ourselves to the state, but we're doing that with less dollars than the average state This second graph shows the per pupil spending in relation to all of our neighboring or bordering districts. I think this is also important because you can see that Easton is even further down in this comparison. Obviously, when you consider that we are neighbors and competing for high-quality workforce, we can't provide salaries that are proportionately less to these districts. Therefore, a much larger of the proportion of the budget is to salaries, which leaves less funding available for salary increases and programming resources, et cetera. In fact, if you look at just the town that borders Easton that makes or receives slightly more than us, which is Stoughton at eighteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars a student, just that jump would equate to a five-point-six-million-dollar increase to the Easton public schools every year. As you can see, if we were comparable with the state average, it would be an additional twelve million dollars per year. Now, as I noted, we have far better academic achievement, music and art programs, robust sport and activity offerings, creative programs, all with significantly fewer dollars. This is to say that you should be confident that every tax dollar is being spent very carefully and allocated to stretch as far as possible, and this is due in no small part to the highly qualified staff that you have serving your children in the Easton public schools. Many of these programs that we've been able to continue to grow and to offer children and expand are due to their creativity, the volunteering of their time, and all of our amazing partners in the community that we can combine with and share services and resources to provide collaborative and beneficial resources for our students, sometimes that are completely cost-neutral because of the high-quality people that are involved. I want to make sure that we highlight the success of the district. It may be that we have fewer dollars to do it, but we're doing everything that we can with what you so generously provide and what we're able to get from the Commonwealth. We're working with our legislative body regularly in order to try to increase that revenue, and we will continue to do so on your behalf, on the behalf of our staff, and on the behalf of our students, all with no layoffs this year. That is important to note what Mr. Reed will punctuate now, is that a lot of this is done with some finite funds that are drying up very quickly, and so we just want to make sure that it is really clear that this is going to get more and more difficult in the future, most notably in fiscal year twenty-six.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. So while the message here is that we're going to make it through another year, which, given what's going on regionally, is a positive thing, it's also to be clear that we have some real challenges on our horizon and that we need to take them seriously as threats to our current service levels. We've had real revenue challenges in Easton for a long time now. You've all surely heard me say the phrase structural revenue deficit so much that despite it rolling off the tongue, it has likely faded into white noise or perhaps has sounded like crying wolf because we are able in the end to balance the budget. We've, that, that comes across that way, probably in part because we've successfully outrun what is an inevitable collision of our high level of public services and educational services and that revenue challenge for nearly twenty years without an operating override. We have done so in Easton by strategically leveraging state grants to capitalize millions in public and private investment to enhance and grow the community, our economy, and the local tax base to sustain the services that we have. At the same time, we've executed innovative programs in the town and school departments to strengthen regional services, generate revenue, reduce costs to Easton, and stretch every dollar as far as we possibly can. This has allowed us to make real progress with things like full-day kindergarten, improved facilities, more effective nine-one-one responses, expanded financial assistance programs, and broad-based community programming. But we've been able to do so, particularly in the current environment, as a measured success that is not shared by all of our peer cities, towns, and districts going through their budget cycle right now. So we're going to keep doing that work, providing the highest level of service that we can, living within the means that we have, to the entire community. Thank you for being here. We appreciate you giving us the opportunity to brief you on article six.
So regarding the recommendations, select board.
Select board recommends.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Okay, so since there are so many items on the operating budget, the way that I do it every year is, is the same. I'll, I'll go through prior to asking for comments or questions on any given item. I'm going to read all of the budget line items. If anyone has any comments on any one of the budget line items, please yellow hold for that item, and I'll mark it down on my sheet up here, and then we'll return to those held items after we vote on all the unheld items. Okay? Everybody understand? Okay, great. So we're going to go through each one. Select board. Finance committee. Reserve fund. Accountant. Assessors. Town collector slash treasurer. Town council. Human resources. Information technology. Town clerk. Planning and economic development. Police. Public safety dispatch. Fire and rescue. Inspection services. Regional and county school assessments. DPW administration. DPW Administration. Health and Community Services. Library. Maturing Debt and Interest. Employee Benefits and Insurance. Other General Government. School Department. Sewer Department Enterprise. Water Division Enterprise. Solid Waste and Recycling Enterprise. PEG Access and Cable-Related Fees Enterprise. Okay, great. So, the way I have it, there were three holds, and they are on DPW Administration, Health and Community Services, and School Department. So, now, I'm going to ask for a vote on all of those unheld budget items, okay? This vote requires a 2/3 majority to pass, all right? So, all of those in favor of those unheld budget items to pass, please raise your orange And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. Okay? And so, the budget passes on the unheld items by 2/3 majority. Okay? So, now, we'll go back to the held items. I'll go through individually on each one that was held. If you have any questions, comments, or concerns, again, one time at the microphone, name and address, and you have to be a resident. Okay? So, DPW Administration.
Field Attorney, 45 Forest Street. Looking at the CPA committee minutes, it says that the walls and landscaping for the project, which we'll discuss in a little bit this evening, will be covered by the DPW, and I'd like to know what the costs are associated with that and if they're part of this budget or the capital budget for both labor as well as the walls.
Could you be more specific which article you're referring to, please?
One of this CPA warrants for Swift Park talks about certain costs are to be paid by the DPW including labor as well as the walls. I want to know what those costs are.
Stephanie Odesba, Planning Director, who staffs CPA committee, come answer that, please. Thank you.
So, the costs that would be covered by DPW labor would be removal of trees at the site that are being up for removal. The walls are being covered by the other funding.
Okay. If I can ask that question now, what are the funding, because there's no disclosure on the town's website or otherwise transparent, so we can vote on that.
We're seeking CPA funds, and there is a fundraising effort that's undergoing, and there are grants that are being applied for to augment the funding.
So, what are the total DPW costs associated with the work estimated cost?
It was less than $10,000.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions, comments, or concerns relative to DPW administration? Okay, seeing none, so this budget line item needs a 2/3 majority vote to pass. All of those in favor of passing the DPW administration, please raise your orange card, and all those opposed, please raise your orange card. And so, that line item passes by 2/3 majority, DPW Administration. The next one that I heard, the hold on, was Health and Community Services. Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Health and Community Services?
Hi, my name is Kelly Summers, Field Press Secretary in Easton. I just have a quick question. I'm not opposed to the budget item at all. I heard somebody say that money from the opioid settlement fund was being used for something or other. I'm not sure what it's being used for. My question is this, you're taking money out of the opioid settlement fund, what would it otherwise be used for?
Sure, thank you. So, the opioid settlement fund is a multi-year legal settlement that distributes funds from manufacturers and distributors of opioids for their theoretical financial impact, although I don't think folks are positing the dollar amount as sufficient throughout the Commonwealth with the opioid epidemic. And so, those funds are governed by an agreement with the Attorney General of Massachusetts that outline the specific causes that they could be used for. They need to be related to substance use disorder or co-occurring mental health services, things of that nature. And so, they are being partially drawn on as a funding source in this budget for existing town and school programming that meets and supports mental health and community services on the town side, that includes things like sustaining the School Resource Officer Program, and in the future, potentially sustaining the licensed mental health clinician that we have working with Health and Community Services and Police.
Thank you, that's a good answer.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to that one line item, Health and Community Services? No. Okay, seeing none. Again, in order to pass this line item, we need a 2/3 majority vote. All of those in favor, please raise those orange cards, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. Okay, so, Health and Community Services passes that line item by 2/3 majority. Okay, the last one that I heard, the hold on, was School Department. Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to School Department?
Yes, Amy Meehan, 133 Purpos Street, friends, leaders, and community members. On behalf of the Eastern Educatorship Association, I come before you today as a concerned citizen and educator to amend the school budget. I offer the following amendment to transfer from available funds in free cash an amount of $200,000 to the School Department line item. The new amount in the School Department line item would be $49,848,315. I offer this amendment in hopes that it will stabilize our schools in a time of hardship that demands more resources and more community support than ever.
Yes, can you just tell me your name again? I'm sorry.
Amy Meehan.
Do you want the amendment up here?
She made it out motion, right?
Right. Yes. Can I get the motion in writing, Amy?
Yes.
Thank you. The amendment, rather. Purchase Street, I think. Do you want to see it? No. Okay, it's too easy. Yeah.
There's $200,000 in free cash available.
Okay, well, so, we'll open it up to... There's no second.
Okay.
So, which is not $200,000 available?
You don't have $200,000.
But I'm finally going to debate. I just wanted to fly by.
I imagine that would be the first comment.
So, Ms. Meehan has moved an amendment. I just need a second before we open it up for debate.
Joss McPeak, 34 Gaslight Lane. I second the motion.
Go ahead, Connor.
So, if I may, before we hear comments from the public, I would just like to clarify that there is not a balance of $200,000 in free cash available based on the financing plan for the warrant that's before you. So, free cash at the close of last fiscal year was $3.3 million. Special Town Meeting appropriated $1.445 million, and then the existing proposed articles, including the balanced budget and the capital plan, contemplate $1.776 million. That leaves you a balance of $101,352 in free cash. So, just wanted to make sure that we were aware of that. Thank you.
So, we're still on that one amendment. Any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to that amendment?
Yeah, can I speak to that amendment?
I'm sorry?
Greg Shea, 40 Union Street, Unionville. I'd like to speak. I'm a proud OA graduate, Easton parent, former educator, and now education advocate. I'm honored to read the following statement on behalf of and in deep support of the educators in this town. We're faced today with a moment of urgent need, need for our children, for our schools, and for our educators. The town of Easton has a tight budget. We've seen that tonight. The state has a funding formula that leaves towns like ours high and dry, and unlike other communities, we lack the businesses to make up the difference. Our town administration, in recognition of this fact, runs one of the most restrictive operational budgets around, not because they want to, but because they feel they have to. We understand the need for restraint. We understand the need for sacrifice. We understand the importance of every dollar for every department in our town. There's good reason to worry about for our economic future. The state is highlighting budget shortfalls, and we note that our own town administrator may be concerned that saving now is necessary to prevent future hardship. We argue instead that our hardship lies not in the future, but in our present. While the town wishes to add to its stabilization fund, we argue that we are not as stable as it is. While we respect the call for restraint, we think it is crucial to act now to stabilize our schools. As the Easton community may be aware, the EEA, the Eastern Education Association, has been active in recent weeks as we seek the funds to address the needs our schools face. We come before you tonight to ask for town's aid in funding our schools. It's our understanding that our school committee now sees the same needs, and we hope they will work with us to address them using these funds. The town's budget is lean, but please note that the town has not had a year with less than $1 million in free cash, what Connor just said notwithstanding, since 2018. We, as a membership, understand that free cash is far from a permanent solution, and that we, as a community, need to work together to address the ongoing revenue issues in our town. We ask for this money tonight in the hopes that we may address our current needs while we commit to further addressing our long-term goals. We ask tonight for funding that will secure the following for our schools. First, a raise for our paraprofessionals that will begin next year. Our paraprofessionals make less than half of the state's average salary, and it has taken a toll. Each year, paraprofessional positions go unfilled as a result of poor pay. We must address this need now to help our most vulnerable children. Second, to secure an adjustment counselor so that middle and high school will no longer have to split one employee between two buildings. And third, the addition of a third-grade teacher to prevent increased class sizes. In an era where students are coming in with such significant social needs, small class sizes have never been more important for the long-term success of our children. And I'll add, just from a personal note, as a parent of a third and fifth grader, that my kids, the kids of this community, and the kids of this entire world have been through a lot in the last couple of years. And obviously, those disruptions that impacted them so deeply have impacted our economy and impacted everything else. But I implore this community and our community leaders to find a way, from whatever budget it is and however it needs to be amended, to get this money into the schools now, because our kids need it now. It's... This is something that hasn't been experienced maybe ever, at least not in generations, and these children in these schools are experiencing the aftereffects of this pandemic now, and we can't wait for, you know, the national economy to turn around. We have to find ways to have answers for our kids in the present. So, I hope we'll find a way to be able to transfer this money over to the schools. Thank you.
Hi, Lois Agopian, 4 Roundtable Road. I have been a paraprofessional at Oliver Ames High School for the past 12 years. I feel like I have an impact on the students that I work with, which has been the driving force behind what I do. I, along with many of my paraprofessional colleagues, are college-educated, and we feel undervalued. I have always been disappointed in the salary for helping in the education of our students. Did you know new paras this year started at $18.85 an hour with no vacation time, and many have second jobs? If you are not familiar with what a paraprofessional does, we are in the classrooms with the teachers and working one-on-one with the students and helping them academically and emotionally. In the elementary school, the paras are with the students as soon as they arrive, all day, lunchtime, recess, and they are the last people they see at the end of the day. We help with all academic subjects, work in small groups, and our jobs are constantly evolving. We are no longer the teacher aide of the past. The needs of the students of all ages are increasing, and the need for paras is increasing as well. I believe a position that is compensated fairly will retain our qualified paraprofessional team and attract other qualified candidates. I believe the money that we are asking from the town is a small price to pay for our children. We are asking for your support to help the children of our future. It starts with a yes vote. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Molly Satter. I live at 255 Turnpike Street. I'm a paraprofessional at the middle school, and I'm talking today not just as a citizen and employee, but a parent, too. I love this town. I love these schools. I grew up here, so between going to school here and raising kids here and teaching here, I've spent over 25 years in these schools, and I care about it a lot. And I love my job, and, sorry. I do have a master's degree in special education, and I've been a paraprofessional for over 10 years, and I love my job, and I know all my colleagues love their jobs, and we make a huge difference every day. I see what we do for our students, and nobody would do this job if they didn't love it. And there just needs to be more of us, and I don't think we can get more of us in high-quality candidates if we're not working towards being paid a living wage. And along with the school adjustment counselors, and as the parent of a child entering third grade, enough teachers in third grade, I just want us to give our kids what they deserve. And I don't feel that education is a place to scrimp and save and stretch things thin and do more with less, I think. Even if you don't have kids or you're not really connected to the school system, doesn't everybody want, like, well-adjusted, well-educated, great little citizens to, like, continue our great town? So, I hope everybody can agree on that and give schools the resources that we really, really need. Thank you.
Hi, Laura Fogel, 5 Chickadee Lane. So, I have, like, two-part question, Connor. My first part is for Alicia Cabral regarding the $200,000, because she's the one who sets the budget. So, I guess, has she thought about how she would... I'd like to hear from her how she plans to spend the $200,000, because that's... And I'm not opposed to it at all, by the way. I'm just... I just want to know what she would do with the money. And with respect to para... Paraprofessionals, sorry. Yeah, I mean, $20 is a minimum living wage in this state. I mean, 18 is not enough. That's just my comment. My second question, which you don't have to answer right now, Connor, because it's not that related to this. I heard your whole presentation, and I would like you to circle back to the whole two-debt exclusions we've passed in the past coming years, because nobody's started paying for them yet, I don't believe. Maybe they have, but there's the school, and there's the public safety complex. And I know, I remember you talking about the average $400,000 house, which nobody really has anymore. They're like... So, if at some point during this presentation, whenever is appropriate, if you could circle back to, like, on, say, an average $800,000 house, what it's going to cost people for these two debt exclusions that are coming up? Because I don't think people are ready for the bomb that's about to hit them. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. Question for me is, this is the first time I'm hearing the amendment, so I don't make budget decisions in isolation. I have a series of meetings set up with staff this week already, starting tomorrow, and certainly would confer with my leadership team as well. The budget is not so fixed at any given point, because we're dealing with humans. We're dealing with children, and we never know what's going to happen. One example of that is that we have an entire summer to go before we know how many kindergartners we're going to have in the fall, and so, we do need to maintain latitude for something like that. So, unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you. That's not something that we've discussed.
Is there a second question?
Thanks, Dr. Cabral. Ms. Fogel, to your second question, although not immediately germane to the operating budget, I'm happy to hear when people regularly say they don't know they're already paying for Blanch Ames, who are. That's because it came in on time and $10 million under budget, and so the average household's paying roughly $250 per year for Blanch Ames School, which is a great thing to see. You are correct that the police-fire public works costs have not really shown up in the tax base yet, just because the project is, is very new. And as we explained to folks here in October, that would come online, as the Blanch Ames did, gradually over the course of two to four years, depending on what borrowing schedule we end up following based on the market, and what we estimated at that time for the median household, and I'll come back to the averaging, was roughly $720 per year. So you are correct that that's meaningful, which is part of why, you know, we're very appreciative that voters have repeatedly stepped up here and supported really large investments, and we have no illusions that those are without cost. But that's not directly related to the operating budget, but so that's, that's, I hope that answers your questions. So Blanch Ames is already fully carried in your tax bill. We're very appreciative and very happy folks supported that back in 2019. The building project will come on gradually in the next few years. Thank you.
My apologies. I also just wanted to clarify that certainly nobody ever says, "No, thank you" to money. However, it is important to note that if money is taken from free cash or another finite fund, that it is good for one year. And so, again, I just want to make sure that we're mindful of the following year and the years coming, that it's a bigger, much, much bigger issue that we have to be aware of.
So before hearing from anybody else, I just want to remind everyone that we're, we have to focus now just on this amendment. Okay? So let's try to move it along, just on the amendment. Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
Crystal Parento, 42 Kennedy Circle. Just in regards to the added $200,000, you know, we have to be speculative about what that would go to, but I, in regards to being able to use that funds towards children's mental health needs via mental health professionals or paraprofessionals, there is a potential savings that could occur, because you might have reduced out-of-district placements as a result. When students don't get those very tier-three MTSS services, I, I don't have the facts, because I wasn't planning on speaking, but I will say there is research that shows you can actually save money in your budget by implementing those types of things. So I think that people in the community should really consider adding this, because it could possibly save money for future budgets. Thank you.
Anybody else regarding the amendment as proposed by Ms. Meehan?
Alexandra Warnke, 17 Blackbrook Road. This is more of a question for Connor or Kate. With the amendment as written, where it doesn't present balanced in the budget, what is the procedure regarding that? Can we vote on something that doesn't end up?
Jay Tellerman, Town Council. So technically, yes, you can vote on it. We can leave town meeting with an unbalanced budget. The reality, however, is that, given the limited free cash available, that means that some, some other thing funded in this budget or in some other, under some other warrant article with free cash will have to get to the cutting room floor.
Okay. And then my second question is more for Alicia Cabral. She kind of mentioned touching on this, where if it is coming from something such as free cash or stabilization fund, does that mean that it will not be applied to a position because there isn't that stability of knowing that it's going to be part of the next year?
So I don't want to speak for, for Alicia, but we only, in this town meeting, we only fund the bottom line for the school budget. What they choose, I'm sure, as she said, she'd always be thrilled to have an extra $200,000. We don't make that decision here. That is not for this body.
That is kind of why I was directing the question to her, because she does make that decision with the $200,000, if she would be funding it, putting it towards.
Well, I'll, I'll let her answer that, obviously, but I think she already said that it'd be a little bit more complex than something she could answer tonight, but I'll certainly defer.
Okay.
So we certainly don't try to, or try to avoid hiring people with finite funds. If that happens and you aren't able to continue to fund them, we then have to pay unemployment, and so you end up further in a deficit than if you didn't hire the position for that year.
If I could just add, on the subject of either free cash or stabilization funds in the budget, as we touched on in the presentation, the, the balanced budget as proposed already is leaning on our reserves. It is already drawing on stabilization funds. And we know that any recurring costs in a town or school department's funded with that are going to recur next year, plus any contractual obligations, things of that nature. And so we are nearly certainly, although I don't like to forecast a year out, heading into a very, very difficult fiscal year '26 budget cycle, in part because we are already leveraging these one-time funds, which we would not, under normal circumstance, do. So I would defer to council as far as what happens if free cash is moved when that amount is not in the finance plan. But I just want to be clear, respecting that ultimately town meeting's going to vote on that bottom line, that these are not recurring funds. And this is not the first time we've had a, a discussion of this type of town meeting. We've had a lot of pretty tough conversations around various programs that are worthwhile and that we would like to see invested in more, and voters have come and prepared amendments to use stabilization funds in the past for things like school resource officers and other good programs, and ultimately voted those down, because it's our responsibility to be forthright with you, but setting aside the merit of what is trying to be accomplished, which no one, I don't think, is contesting, when these are one-time funds, if they go towards a recurring cost, you, you can be quite sure that you're looking at cutting it 12 months into the future, disrupting that program and paying those unemployment funds. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions, or concerns relative to the amendment?
Can I amend my amendment?
No. We have to vote on the amendment as it is. You can?
Yep. She needs a motion.
Yes.
Can I make a motion to amend my previously submitted amendment?
Yes. Well, we, we don't know what it is yet. We need to hear it before somebody seconds it. Let's hear it.
I'd like to amend the dollar amount to $100,000. Do you need me to read the whole thing?
Okay, yes.
Okay. On behalf of the Easton educators, I come before you again as a concerned citizen, educator, parent of many, many students in this district. I offer the following amendment to transfer from available funds in free cash an amount of $100,000 to the school department line item. The new amount in the school department line item would be $49,748,315. We respect the need for a balanced budget and are not looking to upset that. However, we also deeply respect the work of our paraprofessionals and would like to invest further in them. So I offer this amendment in hopes it will stabilize our schools, our students' experiences in this community.
Can I have the motion? Can I have the motion? Okay, so given that there has been an awful lot of debate about this, we're going to, we'll vote on this motion to amend the amendment first, okay? What Amy Meehan just read, I will read to everybody, and it's a motion to amend the amendment, and it requires a two-thirds vote, right?
No. Simple majority.
Simple majority? I stand corrected. It requires a simple majority. Okay. So it reads as follow. So it's a motion to amend the amendment to transfer from available funds in free cash an amount of $100,000 to the school department line item. The new amount in the school department line item would be $49,748,315. So a yes vote means that this reduces the amendment to $100,000, okay? Everybody clear on that? Okay. So all of those in favor of this motion to amend the amendment that I just read, please raise your orange cards. And all of those opposed. Okay, so that passes by a simple majority. So now we have to go to the original amendment.
As amended to $100,000.
As amended to $100,000.
And now a simple majority.
And now we need a simple majority vote on that. Same, same thing. Now, the original, the amendment becomes $100,000 as opposed to the original $200,000, so we need a simple majority vote on the amendment. All those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all those opposed. Can we do that one more time? All those in favor of that amendment passing, please raise your orange card, and all of those opposed. Okay, so that passes as a simple majority. Okay, before we get to the budget.
Thank you. So I'd like to offer, you know, this is my, I think, eighth town meeting where we've had a budget before the voters, and I think had either three or four of them now. We've had folks who understandably are concerned about making sure that we're funding all of our services, particularly education, in a sustainable way that allows for, you know, the, the kind of programming that the community deserves, the kind of compensation our educators deserve. And, you know, the, the town leadership, the school leadership, has obviously been, been watching this in April and May, and the concern that we often have is that there's a lot of good energy and passion about this here, and then the budget, theoretically, hopefully, I don't know how many more amendments we may have, passes tonight, and then the conversation doesn't necessarily continue. And what selfishly I don't want is to be standing here in 12 months, having a harder budget cycle, where we've lost the opportunity to publicly and with the voters and the citizens of this town have the conversation about how and whether we are going to sustain our services. And so I believe the, the chair of the board has an amendment to propose to the balanced, or an amendment to propose to the amended budget.
I move to amend the main motion by adding--
Excuse me, moderator? I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the amendment.
There's a motion on the floor.
Gary Erickson, 134 Sheridan Street.
Okay, we need a second.
Second.
Okay. What, I'm sorry, what's your last name, sir?
Erickson, 134 Sheridan Street.
Okay, so a motion to reconsider that has been seconded needs a, now we need a two-thirds majority. Right? Still simple?
Yeah, it's just reconsidering the last vote.
The last motion, the last vote. So it's still a simple majority. Someday, we'll get to the two-thirds that I keep asking for. Still a simple majority vote. So the motion to reconsider.
Let people know what they're voting.
Yep.
Let them know what the motion to reconsider is. I don't think they want to.
So the motion to reconsider from the floor is a motion to reconsider the amendment to the budget that was just voted on. So exactly--
Correct. I'd like to, I'd like it to be voted on again.
Okay. So a motion to reconsider has to be done before, the same day as the original motion was carried, okay? It can only be done once, so what we're doing is reconsidering the vote that we all, that you all just voted on to amend the budget to add $100,000 to that one line item for the school department, okay? So a yes vote, simple majority yes vote, would lock in or secure that $100,000?
No, no, no. A no vote locks it in.
Okay, I'm sorry. A no vote locks it in, a yes vote reopens it, okay? So all of those in favor of reconsideration, please raise your orange card. And, okay, and all those opposed to reconsideration, please raise your orange card. Okay, so that motion to reconsider fails, so the original amended budget line stays. Okay, now.
I move to amend the main motion as amended by adding the following language, and further provide that town meeting authorize the establishment of a committee to be jointly appointed by the select board and the school committee to review the town and school department's staffing, programming, and overall operating positions, including a comparison to comparable communities, and making a report to the 2025 annual town meeting, along with any recommendations for appropriate actions or remedial measures, all designed to facilitate the promotion of sustainable and quality services in the town of Easton. The committee shall include the town administrator, superintendent, finance director of the town, and Easton Public Schools, the chairs of the select board, school committee and finance committee, and no fewer than six residents-at-large to be appointed by the select board and school committee. A committee charge shall be adopted by the select board and the school committee as, at a duly posted public meeting in advance of the solicitation of any volunteers to be considered for appointment.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to the amendment that was just made by select board member Fol Janetti?
Rob Daly, Highland Street. So you're just creating a board of all the people that were against that motion? The full board there, that, all the people that are against this, and that's your, that's your board--
No, there would be six citizens--
That you're going to select.
There would be six citizens--
That you're selecting.
Yes?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
To be clear, this committee would be advisory reporting back to town meeting a year from now. Whether town meeting wants to consider adopting this study committee or not, it does not change the amendment which increased the school budget by $100,000 regardless. So I just want to make sure that's clear. This is not an end run around whether or not the school budget was increased this year. It's trying to create a public body, including citizens, to work on this subject over the next 12 months, because we have good reason to think that the budget in fiscal '26 will be a difficult one.
Go ahead, sir.
Mark Carpenter, 12 Adams Street. I have a general question related to education in town. You know, we're seeing a, you know, a nationwide increase in administrative costs for schools around the, you know, around the country nationwide. So I'm wondering, since that ratio for administrative costs is growing much faster than educators, I'm wondering how we plan to address that. I'm wondering how we plan to address that in the long term so we don't lose educators vis-à-vis, you know, we're losing a music teacher. And, you know, while that music teacher may have been specifically designated for, you know, the choral group, those teachers do other things. So I kind of want an idea, or I want an idea of, you know, what it is that's Easton's greatest burden administratively, how we're gonna deal with that in the long run, especially since we're losing COVID funds and funding's getting tighter and there's, you know, finite resources.
So this questions, comments, and concerns right now have to do with just this amendment. So any other questions, comments, or concerns relative to the amendment that was just presented?
Sorry, I thought we were done with the amendment.
Go ahead, sir.
Paul Meehan, 133 Purchase Street. I'll ask the Board to reconsider. I have no idea why you would not include adjustment counselors, school psychologists, guidance counselors, the rank-and-file frontline troops that are here advocating for these children. Please reconsider that. You have an opportunity, everybody here, to do the right thing. Do it.
This amendment is a makeup of a committee to try to address that. $100,000 moving into that budget isn't gonna solve all of those problems, and we're gonna be in the same position next year. So what we're basically saying is we want to work with this collective energy to get people together. The School Committee and the Select Board meet all year long to look at this budget and the Finance Committee, spend numerous hours to do it. It's a painful process. We all care about education. We all have kids in this system. It's not an issue of that. It's an issue of where's the money gonna come from? Even if it's only $100,000, $100,000 of the school budget is this big, it's not gonna get you anything. You're not gonna even be able to hire a person for that.
Let her finish.
Let me, please let me finish. To take $100,000 out of another budget-
Let her finish.
To take $100,000 out of another budget could really, really be painful because the other budgets are a lot smaller. So what we're trying to say is this amendment doesn't have anything to do with how this budget gets voted, but we're asking people to come forward and help solve this together. Because if the complaint is that the Select Board and the School Committee are not doing what people want, we need to hear from that. Nobody comes to the meetings all year to ask these questions. We come here on this one night, there's a lot of questions. We're asking people to get more involved. That's the amendment.
My point of order was she's speaking to the budget that was already passed.
No, she isn't. She's speaking about the amendment.
So, again, I would encourage you, the people that you listed you want on this committee, what is their training? What is their expertise? Can you answer that?
Well, the training and the expertise is the School Committee has all the knowledge about their budget. They know what they need. They get feedback, as Dr. Cabral said. She meets with the leadership team, with the staff, to find out what they need. The Select Board, we're in charge of the budget. We work on this all year long. We have intimate knowledge of the budget. We work with the Town Administrator to make sure that we're able to deliver exceptional services with the funding that we have. We know that if we take money out of stabilization and free cash, that could affect our credit rating. $100,000 is not a big issue one way or the other, but we've worked really hard to define financial principles so that we wouldn't have to keep digging into free cash and stabilization. We saved it for when we really need it. This year is when we really need it. Next year is gonna be a whole different story. A lot of this funding goes away. You can't hire people with one-time funding because then next year, we're not gonna have the funding to pay for them. So that's why a committee would help with that. The Superintendent of Schools, the Finance Director, the Chair of the Finance Committee, these are all people that work on budgets all the time. We have the most knowledge about that, so I would stand behind that.
If I could just add, I don't know, Mr. Meehan, is your question whether we could also appoint members of staff to it? And the answer is there's no, there's nothing in this language. There's nothing in this language that would limit it to citizens who are not staff, right? And we obviously have many here. We know that we all have to work together in management and in labor to move forward. And so I just want to clarify, that's part of why the amendment proposes that a charge is adopted at a future public meeting where it can be spelled out more specifically, but nothing about saying a minimum of six residents forecloses on or would prohibit the appointment of folks who are employed by the schools, the fire department, you name it. And obviously, we would want to make sure that we hear from those folks because these things directly into their day-to-day. So I just want everyone here in the room to appreciate the amendment that the Chair proposes doesn't go back on or change the now voted amendment to add 100,000 to schools, nor does it foreclose on the opportunity for educators or other staff members who are citizens to be appointed to the committee, or educators or other staff members who may not live in town participating in going to what would be public meetings. Thank you.
Dottie, Laura Fogel, 5 Chickeny Lane. So I don't remember how many people you said in total and where they're coming from, but what I would propose is an amendment to your amendment where that two people come from the schools and the educators, the unions get to decide who they'd send. I think that would make sense, to let the teachers have a role in it, or, and they can pick. That's my proposal. Thank you.
We need it in writing, Ms. Fogel.
Does anybody want to volunteer for this a good idea? I don't even know how to write this up.
You have to write it up in order for us to consider it.
I can do it. Well, but I need to know what yours says.
So this says that the committee charge would be adopted by the-
Come on up.
The committee charge would be adopted by the Select Board and the School Committee at a duly posted public meeting. So that would be, the public could come in, they could make comments like that, and this could be adjusted to include what you're saying, so.
Is that somebody calling the question? Is that what I heard? We just need to have her write up the amendment, and then we can move it on.
Madam Moderator, can we ask select person Dottie to just sum up that amendment again? Because I think some of us lost track of what happened with that. Just give us a quick-
Sure, but now remember that there's gonna be an amendment to that, so, okay.
So it's to provide that town meeting authorize the establishment of a committee to be jointly appointed by the Select Board and School Committee to review the town and school department's staffing, programming, and overall operating positions, including a comparison to comparable communities, and making a report to the 2025 Annual Town Meeting along with any recommendations for any appropriate actions or remedial measures, all designed to facilitate the promotion of sustainable and quality services in the town of Easton. The committee shall include the Town Administrator, Superintendent, Finance Director of the Town and Eastern Public Schools, the Chairs of the Select Board, School Committee, and Finance Committee, and no fewer than six residents at large to be appointed by the Select Board and the School Committee. A committee charge shall be adopted by the Select Board and School Committee at a duly posted public meeting in advance of the solicitation of any volunteers to be considered for appointment.
Madam Moderator, I second that motion. Is that a form of motion from?
It already, that motion has already been seconded, but then there was an amendment, I believe.
Can we move the question on it?
We did. Laura Fogel, can you just clarify the name of the union that you're referring to? I can't, I can't really hear you.
Eastern Educators Union?
Eastern Educational Association.
Is that correct? I can't read this. Laura Fogel, 5 Chickeny Lane. It's the Eastern Education Union, Eastern Education Association.
Yep, got it.
Is that it?
Right.
Eastern Educational Association. Educators, got it. Okay, so I'm gonna read the amendment to the amendment as proposed by Ms. Fogel, okay? And it's just the very end, but I'm gonna read, I have to read the whole thing, and then we have to vote on it that way, okay? I move to amend the main motion by adding the following language. Any and further provide that town meeting authorize the establishment of a committee to be jointly appointed by the Select Board and School Committee to review the town and school department's staffing, programming, and overall operating positions, including a comparison in comparable communities, and making a report to the 2025 Annual Town Meeting along with recommendations for any appropriate actions or remedial measures, all designed to facilitate the promotion of sustainable and quality services in the town of Easton. The committee shall include the Town Administrator, Superintendent, Finance Director of the Town and Eastern Public Schools, the Chairs of the Select Board, School Committee, and Finance Committee. Two members of the Eastern Educators Association, right, I got that right? And no fewer than four residents at large to be appointed by the Select Board and School Committee. A committee charge shall be adopted by the Select Board and School Committee at a duly posted public meeting in advance of the solicitation of any volunteers to be considered for appointment. I got that right? Where'd you go? Right, okay, so-
It was to be chosen by the union, so they get to pick their own representatives. The Eastern Educational Union Association. Sorry. Sorry.
Madam Moderator. James Breton, 16 Ridgewood Road. We moved here for the schools. The schools are wonderful here in Easton. I second that amendment, and let's move the question.
Hold on, sir, no, hold on, sir, please. Okay, so the way that I just read it, just noted that the two members of the Eastern Educators Association are chosen by the- Eastern Educators Association. Everybody follow me? Okay, so we need to vote on this amendment to the amendment as I just kind of reiterated, all right? So all those in favor, again, we have a simple majority vote. All those in favor of the amendment to the amendment, please raise your orange cards. All those opposed, please raise your orange cards. Okay, so the amendment to the amendment passes by a simple majority, right? And- Now it becomes the amended motion.
Now we have to vote on the committee on that amendment by a majority.
Okay, so now we need to vote on the, to create the committee by this amendment by a majority vote. All those in favor of creating the committee as this amendment was just read, please raise your orange cards. And all those opposed, please raise your orange cards. Okay, great, so that passes. Thank you. Now we're back to the main motion, or the main operating budget to the line item that we started with in the operating budget for school department, okay? As now amended, okay? We need to vote on this operating budget line item. It's gonna be a two-thirds majority with the additional $100,000. Everybody follow me? Okay, fabulous.
Excuse me. I would like to go to motion to close on the official procedures to use a town meeting, approval town meeting of May 1978. Motion to close to change the zoning laws to fit-
No, we're not, we're not there yet.
Oh yeah, we're not doing it. 80% of these people ask. Raise your hands, everybody, let's go. That's what you're here for, to keep Easton the way it's supposed to be.
We're not there yet, sir.
If you don't want to accept it, then we'll go higher.
We're still doing the operating budget. We're still doing the operating budget, so we need to get through this, and we'll get to the rest of the article.
We're gonna have to bring sleeping bags to do that.
Yeah, you need to sit down, sir.
So you're refusing, you're refusing my request to go to motion to close.
Hey, let's just vote on this final line item of the operating budget as amended, the school department line item adding the $100,000. All of those in favor, please raise those orange cards. Remember, it has to be a two-thirds majority this time. All of those opposed, please raise those orange cards. Okay, finally, so the budget passes as amended. Two-thirds vote. Article number seven.
Could I make a motion? Eric Livsey, 161 Howard, could I make a motion to move up to Article 17?
No.
Could I get an explanation, please?
Where are we?
It's in your bylaw.
Okay, I don't have the bylaw. Can I, sir, can I have your name again?
Eric Livsey.
What's your last name?
Livsey, L-I-V-E.
And where, what's, where do you live?
161 Howard. Could I get an explanation?
Howard or Howe?
Howard.
Howard. Okay, so he's just moved, made a motion to move Article 17 up to now in place of Article seven up. I need a second. All right, so everybody understands, so everybody understands in order to pass, it has to be a four-fifths majority in order to pass, to move things around, okay? So all of those in favor of skipping, jumping forward to Article number 17, raise your orange cards. And all those opposed, please raise your orange cards. Should we count? Okay, again, put the cards down. All those in favor, raise the orange cards.
I don't know if standing's gonna help or not.
And all those opposed?
It's up to you if you want to be sure.
All right, all put your cards down. All those in favor, raise your orange cards, stand up, we're gonna have a count. Stand up. Don't grumble about it. This is what you want, stand up. All right, can we have some, can we have some counters? He's testing. Okay, so, okay, so you- You all can sit down. Those that had your orange cards raised can all sit down. Now we're gonna switch it up. All those opposed to moving Article 17 forward, please stand up. Now it's your turn to get counted. All those opposed to moving it up. Okay, everyone, everybody can sit down. Everybody can sit down, so that, so that motion did not pass. So moving along, moving along, Article 7. 146 to 225. Or 225 to 146, it's not four fifths. Okay, Article 7.
"I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $11,443,000 for the purpose of meeting the capital budget needs of the town for the fiscal year 2025. As listed in the warrant under Article 7, and that to meet this appropriation, $20882 shall be transferred from free cash. $152,780 shall be transferred from Medicare cost recovery funds. $250,000 shall be transferred from the capital stabilization fund. $5,903 shall be transferred from the surplus funds voted pursuant to Article 8 of the May 16, 2022 Annual Town Meeting. $4,215 shall be transferred from surplus funds voted pursuant to Article 6 of the November 14, 2022 Special Town Meeting. $335,000 shall be transferred from water surplus, and that the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow $10,494,220 for the ambulance replacement. School security system upgrades for three schools, Old Pond Dam safety repairs, DPW Mack truck Ford F-150 and F-350 replacements, fire shift command vehicle, Red Mill Road water treatment plant PFAS upgrades, PFAS filtration replacements and water main replacement under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, or any other enabling authority provided in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws. The premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes thereunder, less any such premium applied to the payment of the costs of issuance of such bond or notes, may be applied to pay project costs, and the amount authorized to be borrowed for each such project shall be reduced by the amount of any such premium so applied, and to authorize the Select Board to do or take all actions necessary to carry out these projects on behalf of or in the name of the town." "By way of explanation, this is the annual capital budget for the town. Funding sources are long-term borrowing and available funds. A two-thirds majority vote is required for borrowing and appropriations from the capital stabilization fund. Select Board recommends."
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 7? Okay, seeing none, Article 7 requires a two-thirds majority vote to pass. All of those in favor of Article 7 passing, please raise your orange cards. All of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article 7 passes by two-thirds majority. Article 8.
"I move that the town vote to rescind $1367,000 of borrowing authorized under Article 19 of the May 25, 2017 Annual Town Meeting as printed in the warrant." "By way of explanation, this housekeeping article will remove the remaining balance of $1367,000 left over from the original $3,667,000 authorization, which was not borrowed, and would otherwise remain on the books indefinitely. Select Board recommends."
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 8? Seeing none, Article 8 requires a simple majority vote. Pass all those in favor of Article 8, please raise your orange cards. All of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article 8 passes by a simple majority. Article 9.
Brief presentation, Madam-
Yep. Sure.
Well, hi, everybody. My name's Tom Broussard. I'm the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee.
Tom, hang on, we're gonna do, we have to do the motion first and we'll do the presentation after, thank you.
Okay. "I move that the town vote to appropriate or reserve from Community Preservation Fund annual revenues. The amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for administrative expenses, community preservation projects, the payment of debt service, and other expenses in fiscal year 2025. With each item to be considered a separate appropriation, all as printed in the warrant." "By way of explanation, this article proposes the fiscal year 2025 budget for the Community Preservation Committee. Amounts to be funded shall be considered separate appropriations. The Chair of the C-C, CPC Committee will give a brief overview of the CPA program and this year's planned projects. Select Board recommends."
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
And Community Preservation Committee?
CPC recommends.
Okay, you can do your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Uh, thank you, everybody. Recognizing CPC articles are between us and warrant Article 17. I'll try to be brief. Uh, we have two slides just to educate folks on what the CPA actually is. Uh, for those that, of you that haven't experienced it yet, uh, there'll be no other presentation for the following warrant articles except for Swift Park. I'll get back up and go through a few slides on that. Uh, just by way of understanding what the Community Preservation Act is, it is state legislation, it's actually Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44B, in case anybody wants to look up for good reading. Um, but it really is a very critical tool that back in September of 2000, the state recognized an important focus was needed. And candidly, it enables communities like ours to focus on the preservation of open space and recreation, to create and preserve affordable housing, and to preserve and restore historic resources. The CPA only focuses on those three items. Those are the three things that we are able to support for. The incentive from a financial perspective and why it's smart for Easton to have joined this as an early adopter back in 2001. So far to date, the state has matched 45 cents for every dollar we town residents have contributed. The CPC is a, a group of citizen volunteers to oversee the budget, there's applications, there's projects. We do meet monthly, we encourage everybody to participate, and anybody can submit an application for utilization of our funds as long as it meets the criteria of the CPA, and we're happy to work with anybody. We certainly appreciate the partnership we have with several other committees that we work with throughout the year, the DPW. We certainly appreciate town resources, especially Stephanie Danielson and Wayne Byler. Appreciate you all. Uh, as I mentioned, Easton was an early adopter back in 2001. Uh, it's a 3% property tax surcharge, it's meaningful. Uh, low income and the first $100,000 of value is exempt. Uh, all of the FY '25 warrant articles have been overwhelmingly supported by the CPC, the Finance Committee, and the Select Board. Just in order to give you some, uh, frame of reference for how much, how meaningful this is, uh, so far, it's about $37.2 million worth of funding raised since 2001. The majority of it, $23.1 million, is from our own local property tax contribution. 10.3 million, or 45% of that amount, has been matching state funds that we have received and put to great use. And we have actually generated investment income via interest and other funding of 3.8 million. I'd like to give credit to Representative Doherty. She pointed out several of the projects from last year that we are proud to have participated in, whether it was the basketball courts, the tennis courts, the pickleball courts at OA, the RO playgrounds, and certainly many of the other projects that we are able to accomplish, whether it was the Governor Ames Estate, um, Carriage House, or the Town Hall Rehab. The long list of CPC projects that you, our town residents, have supported is very lengthy. I hope everybody has experienced them and I, I feel confident you have. I do feel overwhelmingly that these represent real, true values that Easton embodies, unaffordable housing, open space and recreation, um, and certainly historic resources. I think that's what enables Easton to stand out amongst our peer communities. I think that supports economic engagement and development and growth. And I certainly think it supports our housing values, and we all know those have done incredibly well. So, appreciate you as residents supporting what the CPC aspires to do, and we're very grateful for a state program that helps us with matching funds to get more done than we otherwise could in our own. So with that, I think we're gonna go through the rest of the warrant articles. I'll be back up here for the Swift Park, Memorial Park discussion. Thank you.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 9? Seeing none, Article 9 requires a simple majority vote. To pass, all those in favor of Article 9, please raise those orange cards. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article 9 passes by a simple majority. Article 10.
Article 10. "I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of $291,374 for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and that to meet this appropriation, $229,000 shall be raised from Community Preservation Fund fiscal 2025 annual revenues, and $62,374 shall be transferred from the Community Preservation Funds reserved for community housing." "By way of explanation, this article would fund the Affordable Housing Trust activities for fiscal year 2025. The trust works to implement the goals and strategies of Easton's state-mandated housing production plan, and to provide resources and affordable housing options to low and moderate-income residents. Fiscal year 2025 activities will include support for a nonprofit developer to create affordable family housing on Pecan Cut Avenue and Morris Road, and support for planning work and related administration for the town to meet its Chapter 40B requirements. Select Board recommends."
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Community Preservation Committee?
CPC recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article 10? Seeing none, Article 10 requires a simple majority vote. To pass, all those in favor of Article 10, please raise those orange cards. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article 10 passes by a simple majority. Article 11.
"I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of $4,882 from Community Preservation Fund fiscal 2025 annual revenues for community garden improvements." "This article would allocate $4,882 for improvements, including rebuilding and replacing fencing, compost bins, and other infrastructure at the 25 Space Community Garden at the John E. Grant Management Area of Wheaton Farm on Bay Road. The funding will buy materials. Agricultural Commission members and community gardeners will carry out the work. Select Board recommends."
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Community Preservation Committee?
CPC recommends.
CPC recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article XI? Okay, seeing none, Article XI requires a simple majority vote. To pass all those in favor, please raise your orange card. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange card. And Article XI passes by simple majority. Article XII.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of $54,395 from Community Preservation Fund Fiscal 2025 Annual Revenues to create and install new conservation properties signage.
Second.
This project will fund fabrication and installation of 14 new conservation properties signs at various locations townwide. Deteriorated signs will be replaced and signs will be installed at properties where there are currently none. An additional three signs will be funded by the Conservation Commission. The design of the signs will be consistent with the recently adopted Townwide Wayfinding Signage Master Plan. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Community Preservation Committee?
CPC recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article XII? Seeing none, Article XII requires a simple majority vote to pass. All of those in favor, please raise those orange cards. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article XII passes by a majority. Article XIII.
I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of $20,000 from Community Preservation Fund Fiscal 2025 Annual Revenues for perimeter fencing at Keach Field.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article would provide $20,000 in funding to install a chain-link fence around the perimeter of Keach Field on Chestnut Street, which will keep balls from traveling into the woods outside the field area. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Community Preservation Committee?
CPC recommends.
Any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article XIII? Seeing none, Article XIII requires a simple majority vote to pass. All those in favor, please raise your orange cards. And all of those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article XIII passes by a simple majority. Article XIV.
I'll pause after reading the motion for Mr. Broussard to give his presentation. So I move that the town vote in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee to appropriate the sum of $698,000 from Community Preservation Fund Fiscal 2025 Annual Revenues to construct Swift's Park.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article would provide $698,000 in funding to reconstruct Swift's Park at the northwest corner of Foundry Street and Paquannicat Avenue, which will serve as a memorial to the first responders and the lives lost in the 1918 flu pandemic and the 2019 COVID pandemic and to the historical significance of the Furnace Village District. Coupled with recent zoning and sewer improvements, Swift's Park will create a valuable public amenity and continue the ongoing revitalization of the historic Furnace Village, which is also slated for long-term road, bike, and pedestrian improvements. The Swift's Park Steering Committee has committed to raise additional funds towards the total project cost. The Chair of the CPC Committee is prepared a brief presentation regarding this article.
Go ahead, Tom.
Do the recommends first?
No, that's fine. You can do the presentation first.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens, and thank you, everybody. Hopefully, we can go through a few slides here and give you more color on what, for us this year, is our largest presentation or project. Thank you. So I think we all know the location, but it's Paquannicat and 106. This is, as discussed, an area of focus for our town for many, many years. It is specifically a memorial park, looking to revitalize that community amenity, anchoring a long-term development strategy for this historic Furnace Village. It certainly supports current and recent investments in this area and certainly is in alignment with the future planning that we all know is coming for this stretch of 106. It is projected to coincide with Easton's Tricentennial in 2025. As mentioned, it's a site honoring those who died in the 1918 influenza pandemic and certainly the COVID-19 pandemic much more recently. This site honors those who cared for them. And I do want to point out that the CPC does strive to look for those projects that reinforces other aspects of the CPC purview. And by that, I mean, yes, in and of itself, it is an open space area, so certainly meets the criteria on its own. But it is also near other open space that we, as residents, hold near and dear of New and Old Pond and the infrastructure around there and the trails. It is certainly in the historic, historical village area. What I never appreciated is this area was actually, I would call, famous first. 1751 was when we actually began foundry efforts. We literally made cannonballs for the revolution here at the foundry. And that's why it got the genesis and the beginning of the Furnace Village. There's just a tremendous amount of history here. Mr. Hans can probably do a far better job than I just did in a few moments. And lastly, there's a tremendous amount of affordable housing that is also going on in this area. South Street, Avalon, there are two other locations in the area on Foundry Street. And we already heard about the Paquannicat focus for affordable housing team. So there are three aspects to CPC purview that this project is near or around that could also support and benefit from its creation. In terms of engagement, one of the things for the CPC that we look at is that there is actually robust community engagement. And I just thought it would be helpful for you to realize how we were approached for the CPC. First of all, appreciate, as always, the engagement of the Furnace Village Neighborhood Collective. We received a letter of support from Dale Karister, and that organization is over 160 people. We've received letters of support from the Abutters, Arlene Keach, also a Swift Park Committee representative. The Council on Aging, the Recreation Committee, the Swift Park Committee, all recommended this and sent letters in supporting it. Credit to the Swift Park Committee for a tremendous amount of effort. Ed Hans, John Ventresco, Tony Basa, Stephanie Danielson, Dale Karister, Chris Mills, Tim Hurley, Joe Pitti, Craig Barger, Matt Solner, Arlene Keach, Justin Alexander, Chief Alexander, thank you, Chief Boone, and Meredith Keach. So just a tremendous amount of community engagement. And then lastly, after that, it was voted for warrant inclusion and recommended by the following boards and committees, the CPC itself, the Select Board, the Finance Committee. The reason why I bring it up is it's not often that 200 people, which is the aggregate of those bodies that I just spoke about, usually approach town. There's 369 of you here tonight for town meeting. So it was just a tremendous call for support of a project in this particular area of town that is seeking investment, that knows development is coming. And I just want to give credit to all of those people for supporting the project and reaching out to help educate the CPC on how important this was. Thank you. Next up, we also seek alignment with community initiatives. So is it keeping in planning with the envisioned Easton Plan? Is it keeping with other investments that the residents of our community have made? And candidly, improvement in smart development to the Route 106 corridor from Target to Five Corners is something we have been working on for years. Perhaps decades is actually appropriate if you think about some of the things we, as residents, have supported over the years and our leadership has enabled us to put forth. First of all, the area for this, the vision for this area is targeted residential growth. We all know that there is a dense neighborhood that we all voted to support at a prior meeting that's being built across the street from this location. The support for economic development, supporting business and commercial tax revenue base, so a walkable community enables more people to participate in, whether it's Target Plaza all the way up to Five Corners. That's the walkable stretch we talk about with access to the other open space amenities that are around and certainly providing areas of neighborhood connection. There is a dearth of parks in this area. So having an opportunity where people can congregate and certainly when the vision for this area is completed in the years to come of a walkable stretch, I can imagine many people hopefully enjoying great food, whether it's from La Familia McGuire, sitting on a bench while they're walking back and forth. In 2018 was the genesis of this particular vision. I just want to remind people this isn't something that just popped up. 2020 residents voted to create the Furnace Village District that I mentioned to encourage the development, create the sense of community, and to create a neighborhood connection and respond to modern commercial needs and demands. I certainly think the creation of this memorial park would go a long way to helping that vision and play a part in that step. And I also just want to go back. We've been talking about development of this area since 2004, when we talked about the need for sewer. In 2008, when we asked Mansfield to include us in the regional planning. And in 2010, when we, as residents, voted for a sewer district in Five Corners, knowing that if we were going to grow this area responsibly and thoughtfully, it would require those types of investments that we've made. just in terms of other components that we consider, we like to have skin in the game. So credit to this particular applicant. The Swift Park Committee has made a meaningful commitment for private fundraising. There are multiple park versions that that committee went through. They went back to the drawing board multiple times. And they absolutely coordinated with the DPW, with the town, and with the consultants to make sure we had a durable, affordable, low, as low maintenance as you can get to be thoughtful about the future operating expenses that adding this might be. I do want to point out, this is not the first for a park of this type. Comparable with prior Easton resident-supported projects through the years, whether it was the Rockery, whether it was Queeset Gardens, or whether it was Alley's Park. And certainly consistent with open space and recreation planning and understanding of the appreciation for microparks, I'll call them. And that's Povis Park on Center Street. I've seen a lot of people sitting there. I'm pretty sure we all know where that is. I do want to point out, there is a, as most people who know me, there is a business side to myself. $698,000 is not low. But I do want to point out that those are current-day dollars. And we all may remember the prior projects I mentioned. But Queeset Gardens in today's dollars would be nearing $770,000. And I think that adds context for how much costs have come up over time. And I just wanted to give that kind of, we do ask that question. We try to be very thoughtful with the precious resources the CPC is allocated. We are within our budget this year. Just in case anybody wants to know if we had to borrow for this, we don't. So we are within our budget this year and able to get all of the projects that you've been presented done and included. I'll pause there for questions, if there are any.
Let's get to the recommendations. So Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
And CPC?
CPC recommends.
All right, now, any questions, comments, or concerns relative to Article XIV?
Yes, Dale Karister, 21 South Street. If I live right around the corner, I've been a resident of Easton since 1993. We've already had a lot of change in that area and there's a lot of change going on. If you've drive down that area, you'll know there's a lot of development, both in terms of the Sawmill Village as well as other projects going on throughout the area. As Mr. Broussard mentioned, when the sewer project came through, we formed a neighborhood collaborative group. We have about 160, 165 members. It includes not only single-family homeowners in the area. And sometimes, folks, if you're driving by, you don't realize what the neighborhoods are around there. It also includes the condominiums. Our area actually has about 70% of the town's, entire town's multifamily housing in our area with the various condominiums and with Avalon as well. And it also includes the various businesses in town. We work collaboratively on the sewer project. Our folks care very deeply about this area. We're very deeply invested in this, not just as a taxpayer, but all of the folks in our area were, as a result of the town meeting vote in 2010, ultimately assessed betterments. So for a single-family homeowner, it's a little under $20,000 for the condominiums. It's between $14,000 and $17,000 each. And as far as those betterments are concerned, we're assessed that regardless of whether you hook up to the sewer or not. And as a result of that, that's spurring all sorts of economic development in our area for the benefit of the town as a whole. And our group's been very supportive of those efforts. And we're now asking for some support from the town in response. The vision for this area has been identified as having a walkable community in the area. The vision for this area has been identified as having a walkable community in the area, and in particular, talked a little bit about striving towards something like Main Street, and the renovation, you know, what Main Street has now become as a result of some of the investment in the area. We understand we won't be Main Street, but we'd at least like to take a couple steps in that direction. The folks in our area and our group are very hopeful that we'll have a place like this to go to, you know, a lot of the other areas in town have various parks that they can go to, we don't have something like that, and we're hopeful to have something like that, but even more importantly, what we're looking for is something that will be transformative for this area, and the best way I can describe it is, is ask folks not to look at this area as it has been in the past, or as it is now, but look at it what it can be, and we're asking for your support with a yes vote to help us achieve that vision for a walkable community in our area. Thank you.
Andrew Fleischer, 62 Gaslight Lane. You referenced the walkability factor in this area. Are there any current sidewalks in that area on Route 106 that would link to this project? Because I believe that there are not.
Right. No, there are no active sidewalks there currently. There are access to some of the trails that are behind it, that we're looking at making it to ensure it's safe from there. There is numerous amounts of parkings that people could go and park there, safely drive their car, and enjoy the environment, and just to answer your question, there isn't.
And what's the current, what's the acreage of this, of this park that would be there?
If that's all right, if I could add to the sidewalk question before Mr. Broussard answers the acreage, just to be clear, we all know that there's not a sidewalk connecting to it today. We are actively under the design process for a roadway improvement on Foundry akin to what we've seen on Depot Street. So we have a letter agreement with MassDOT for a fifteen million-plus-dollar project funded by nearly all state and federal dollars in the future to do culvert replacement, widening sidewalks, bike lanes, down Foundry. It's a ways out, I'm not telling you it's tomorrow, it's years, but that used to be the case with Depot Street. So, to Mr. Karister's point, there is a longer-term vision here. If we could expedite those state projects, we would, but we've been very successful with those, and I'd be remiss not to make the point that so far, multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars of the funding that we've put into the design to advance this project, to be in line for fifteen million in state and federal funds for the improvements that folks in that area and this community need for traffic safety, for pedestrian access, are funded with MassWorks and Housing Choice and other grants that we will lose if MBTA zoning is not adopted. So I'll let Mr. Broussard answer the acreage question.
Sure.
The size of the parcel is one-third of an acre, and just so that you know, we did thoughtfully try to go through the planning to ensure that whatever we did place and build would not be dismantled when we did the road expansion, so we worked with the applicant to consider that.
So just to recap, it's a seven hundred thousand dollar park, one-third of an acre, with sidewalks that lead nowhere. Thank you.
Bill Donahue, 45 Forest Edge Road.
One moment, just so that I can give credit to the applicant, it's actually a six hundred ninety-eight thousand dollar ask that we're asking for residents. The project is more, and the applicant has actually stepped up to fund nearly a hundred thousand dollars on their own, so it's more meaningful than just that price tag, and I just want to give them credit for stepping up and contributing to that.
First, I would like to highlight, my wife's a doctor, one of my sisters is a nurse in Boston, my brother led to, is a police officer, leading to the capture of the Marathon bombers, so I'm a hundred percent support of first responders. The price of this project is significant, and it means it's taxpayer money that's not going to go towards projects that could help our schools and other athletic facilities for which we all know we're severely deficient in our town. It's also not an area that's very safe. As I listened to many of the CPC committee meetings, they also highlighted that this stretch from Five Corners to Target Plaza is one of the most dangerous stretches of roads in our town, and there won't be sidewalks for at least eight to ten years or more, so let's be clear on that. And we also unfortunately had a resident die trying to cross the road early this year as well, so I think about that, I think about the builder who's building the cluster house across the street was also the builder we paid two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to renovate a fence, so now we're benefiting them further by paying seven hundred thousand dollars plus. In your minutes here, it cites that the DPW is paying for the walls, so I will correct the earlier statement that the DPW is only paying ten thousand dollars because your own minutes state that the walls would be paid by DPW. So what is the cost of the walls as well?
So I think the only question you had in there was, what are the costs of the walls?
I believe the rest was commentary, just to make sure I didn't miss a question earlier on. So, I can't opine as to what the cost of DPW efforts?
No, it's the actual walls.
What, was that the walls? Right.
Your CPC minutes from January 11th specifically cite that the wall and landscaping will be covered by the DPW.
Sure, Stephanie, I think we can clarify that. But that was your only question of the commentary, I just want to make sure.
So, that is an error in the minutes, DPW is not paying for the wall.
Okay, who's paying for the wall then? And what, and no problem?
That is part of the cost of the project, that's already been discussed.
Okay, so what is the total cost of the project? Because if I go to your website, I go to the town's website, I don't see anything that says this is the total cost of the project, and this is how much is being paid by CPA, private funds? That's really disappointing for lack of transparency.
The total estimated cost is seven hu, around seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
Again, for a third-acre park that's in a dangerous area that will benefit the builder across the street and not be a safe area for others to enjoy. Thank you.
And just to clarify, the, while it was put forth that the schools could utilize CPC funds, any applicant can utilize CPC funds for open space and recreation. In fact, last year, we did fund the projects that were, the school was an applicant on for the basketball courts, tennis courts, pickleball courts, and for the RO. So I just want to make sure people appreciate that by law, statute, we can't just take the monies here and apply them elsewhere in our town, and that's part of why the state set it up that way. They are two distinct pools of capital funds. Ours is designated only for open space and recreation, affordable housing, historic preservation, and anybody can be an applicant in that process.
Ed Hands, 20 Persia Street in Southeaston. Many of you know who I am, I'm a former teacher, and I'm not a rich developer, I wouldn't know Rick Lincoln if I fell over him. So I had no idea when I proposed this project back two and a half years ago that it would benefit a developer. Now, there's some very good questions that were raised by this gentleman over here. Number one, a third of an acre. This is a memorial park, there's not going to be any swing sets down here, this is a place like The Rockery, where people can go and reflect, be a center for the activities that we hope that the people in Furnace Village will become involved in. We estimated the cost of putting in Swift's Park after the sidewalks came in, and it would be a million dollars, so we're saving money. We also know that, we also know that you can't spend CPA money for anything other than the historical open space or affordable housing pieces. It's money that you've put in the bank, and we have, I think, spent it very carefully over the last twenty years. There will be a light there this year, so that people can cross the street slightly more safely than they can now. I certainly know the danger of walking down there, I've done walking tours, and it really is not good until the sidewalks come. Yeah, I admit that, but I think we need a memorial park. I think we need a park that honors not only the first responders, and when I say first responders, I mean not only the police and the fire department, but the teachers who risked a lot during COVID to, you know, do the hybrid kind of education that they were able to do, even the folks at the grocery stores who were there risking their lives to bring up the food that we were doing. So there's a lot of, a lot of people to honor, and there's a lot of people to remember. My cousin died during COVID, and that's kind of where the idea came from, from me. Not so much that he died, but because when he was dying in the hospital, the nurse that was supposed to keep the family away from him was able to allow my wi, his wife to put on a hazmat suit and go see him. So I, I kind of really owe a lot to first responders, I think. The other thing that happened with this project is that the folks in Furnace Village are much more committed to the history of their neighborhood than any other neighborhood in town. I know that because fifty years ago, when I was first on the Historical Commission, we put a marker there because the people in that neighborhood were committed to their history, and when they came to me as we were developing this idea and said, could we honor the history of Furnace Village? I thought it was a great idea, and this is going to replace the old central part of Furnace Village. Once upon a time, yeah, okay, so there were horses instead of cars going by, but there was a bandstand there, community activities took place there, it was a wonderful place. Is it expensive? Yeah, everything's expensive. I bought three trees for the pickleball courts up there in Unionville, and that cost me about fifteen hundred dollars. So trees are expensive, stone walls are expensive. That stone wall question, that's coming out of the main budget. My co-chair, John Ventresco, and I have been involved in fundraising, and we've had a hard time getting started. A lot of money has been taken out of the town to pay for our tricentennial. So fundraising will be going on, we're committed to raising seventy thousand dollars, ten percent of this, that's ten percent more than the people who got the pickleball court put in, and we hope to raise more, I'd like to get up to around a hundred thousand dollars. I don't want to keep us from the next most important thing to talk about, the MBTA stuff, so let's, let's vote on this. I'd like to move the question.
So, if you speak, you can't speak and then move the question? If there's somebody else who wants to call the question?
Well, he's got only two speakers left.
Right, there's two speakers left. Go ahead.
My name is Meredith Keach, I'm the Recreation Representative on the Community Preservation Commission. I've been, in my tenure, I've been involved in a number of parks here in town, Alley's Park, the schools most recently with the addition of the tennis, basketball, pickleball, and the playground at RO, the pickleball courts at Unionville, Edwin's Park up on Chestnut Street, and if I started on each one of those without a vision and said, this is too expensive, we would not have any of those, and they're beautiful parks, and parks come in all forms, they're not all just playgrounds, some of them are stopping grounds, and I ask you when you vote on this tonight, is to think about the vision for that area, there's a complete revival going on in that part of town. At that intersection, there'll be a street light, there are going to be new homes built right across the street, around the corner, there are new homes with young families parked, not tomorrow, but there will be sidewalks, which we need. The solar glare from Paquannicket to Target is enough that could kill someone walking there, and I've recognized, and I've been talking to Connor for years about that, asking if we could get sidewalks, and in comparison, what Connor said, those sidewalks are going to cost fifteen million dollars. The parks that we just put in last year were over four million dollars. Parks are very expensive, and I want to be able to drive down this stretch of land that is having a beautiful revival. These are gorgeous historical homes, and yes, that fence was ghastly expensive, and in the beginning, I thought, my God, if I get a town meeting, I'm going to be tarred and feathered if people see me vote for a two hundred thousand dollar renovation of a fence, but the important piece of that is if we didn't step up and do that, that fence would be gone, and that fence was there during the Revolutionary War. The same, similar fence is up across from Stonehill, and we have magnificent historical resources here, and this is a renovation of a small area, no, it's not safe for playgrounds, and there are other areas in town where the Recreation Commission has said the same. We can have certain types of recreation here, there's passive, there's active recreation, and some, just like Povis Park, which I've used, is a nice stopping area, people, you have water for the dog there, no, you're not going to have a swing set, but they come in all sizes, and I ask you to, when you vote tonight, is to consider the vision for that area. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Antoinette Mulvey, 6 Bradford Street. I had one of my questions already answered in regards to a playground. Will there be sports fields, and will there be parking if there's not going to be sidewalks for time to come?
I'm going to try to go up and show you the main picture. One more. So, if you can somewhat see at the top, you'll see the parking spots, right across the top, so you're talking two, four, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, about sixteen, and certainly not about fields. I think as Ms. Keach pointed out, that this is more of a smaller park, a memorial park, so that you could come sit on your, hopefully on your walk at some point, on sidewalks, along this stretch, that's here, but it's, there's benches, there's seating, so that you can come and enjoy a peaceful, a peaceful stopping point.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hi, excuse me, John Ventresco, I live at 475 Depot Street. I currently Vice Chair with Ed Hands, we've been working on this project for about two and a half years, as we mentioned. For those of you who don't know, this has already been dedicated a park for COVID in nineteen eighteen, so again, we're making this a revitalization of this. While I understand and appreciate, I truly do, the concerns about the size and the traffic, but I look at things a little differently here. This memorial in this nationally historic registered district, you don't necessarily have to stop at a park. Sometimes just going by that park and seeing that memorial is enough reflection within itself to remind us of what went on. There's an old saying, in order to remember the past, we have to honor it, and I sincerely believe that we'd be doing this, again, specifically in this revitalization of this area of town that hasn't seen this in my lifetime, so I urge you to vote in favor of this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, so, in order for Article 14 to pass, we need a simple majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your orange card, and all those opposed, please raise your orange card. Let me do that again. Okay, one more time, all those in favor, please raise your orange card, remember, it's a simple majority, and all of those opposed, please raise your orange card, and Article 14 passes by a simple majority. Article 15.
I move that the town vote to authorize a Select Board to negotiate and accept certain temporary and permanent easements necessary for the construction of improvements at the northwest intersection of Foundry Street and Paquannicket Avenue for the redevelopment of Swift's Park.
Second.
By way of explanation, without my glasses, I'm sure in my hand, this article would allow the town, through the Select Board, to accept easements which may be required for the redevelopment of Swift's Park associated with CPA funding, Article number 14. Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Okay, so, Article 15 needs a two-thirds majority vote to pass. All those in favor of Article 15, please raise those orange cards, and all those opposed, please raise your orange cards, and Article 15 passes by two-thirds majority. Article 16.
I move that the town vote, in accordance with the recommendation of the Community Preservation Committee, to appropriate the sum of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from Community Preservation Fund fiscal 2025 annual revenues to install a fire suppression system at the Easton Historical Society.
Second.
By way of explanation, this article would provide three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in funding to install a modern fire suppression system to protect the Historical Society's circa 1882 National Historic Landmark Building, which is the former Old Colony Railroad Station on Mechanic Street, and the historic artifacts and archives it contains. The Historical Society will provide forty thousand dollars of additional funding towards the total project cost. The Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Community Preservation Committee?
CPC recommends.
Any comments, questions, or concerns relative to Article 16? Okay, seeing none, Article 16 requires a simple majority vote. To pass, all those in favor of Article 16, please raise those orange cards, and all those opposed, please raise the orange cards, and Article 16 passes by a simple majority. Article 17.
I move to amend the town's zoning bylaws by replacing Section 235-40 of the zoning bylaws with a new section entitled "Community Housing Overlay District," and by amending other sections of the zoning bylaw in order to implement the new district, and by amending the town's zoning map to depict the new district, which is comprised of three separate areas, all as described and depicted in the supplement attached to the town meeting warrant.
Second.
By way of explanation, the printed warrant has a summary of the proposal, but it will not be reread as the Chair of the Planning Board and Director of Planning are going to give a presentation explaining the zoning proposal.
Thank you all. My name is Bob Stetson, I'm the Chair of the Planning Board, and with me is Stephanie Danielson, the Town's Planning Director. Together, we're asking for a yes vote tonight on a modest zoning amendment in order to comply with the MBTA Communities Law. So what is this law all about? The law calls for Easton and one hundred and seventy other communities in Eastern Mass to relax certain zoning regulations surrounding multifamily housing. Thus far, the vast majority of communities that have dealt with this law have decided to comply. Based on Easton's status as an MBTA-adjacent community, the law calls for fifty acres of by right multifamily zoning with a minimum of fifteen units per acre, that's roughly nine hundred and thirteen units. But to put the land amount in context, tonight's proposal addresses sixty-five acres of land, or point three percent of the acreage in Easton, so we're not talking about a large amount of land. Two other points I want to get out of the way right away. The first, this is not low-income housing, this is merely a zoning law change, it addresses how certain parcels of land can be used, there are no income-based restrictions whatsoever. And number two, a second but similar point, again, this is a zoning law, it is not a building mandate. Even if we as a community enact this zoning tonight, that does not mean that nine hundred and thirteen units are going up anytime soon, in fact, as we'll explain, that is not likely to be the case. This has been an eighteen-month process. This proposal started far more ambitiously than the one that we're presenting here tonight, and perhaps could have resulted in some fairly significant change. However, based on tremendous community feedback, which has been instrumental in this planning process, sites were selected that will unlikely change, or change in ways that will have minimal disruption on the community overall. We believe this proposal that we're presenting tonight reflects the community's needs and So here it is. Stephanie is going to delve deeper into the specifics, but essentially, we've identified three locations for this zoning overlay. The first is the area off of Roberts Drive that comprises of Avalon. This zoning would essentially codify what already exists, so there will be no change there. The second location is on Belmont Street, across the street from Stonehill. The existing zoning already allows for mixed use, including multifamily housing, except it requires a one-third commercial component with any new development over there. This zoning change would relax that a bit, but in the context of things, it's a very small parcel of land that we're talking about, so, and it's not going to result in any change over there to the intensity of the use or the permissible uses. The third location is Roach Brothers Plaza. This was selected, again, as part of the process of a tremendous amount of community feedback, in the event the MBTA commuter rail line ever extends behind Roach Brothers Plaza, thereby making a redevelopment of that area potentially feasible. Again, however, there are no concrete plans for the MBTA rail line to extend behind there, and more importantly, perhaps, given the fact that that plaza appears to be income-stabilized with long-term tenants likely on triple-net leases, the chance that that's going to be redeveloped in any significant way appears to be fairly low, at least at this juncture. The long and short is that despite what you've probably read in the news, this is not going to be a revolutionary law here in Easton. to be a revolutionary law here in Easton. So the question comes then, if it's not a big deal, why are we going to bother? Well, the primary reason is that the failure to comply with this law will result in the forfeiture of critical state funds, programs that we heard something about tonight, like the Housing Choice Initiative, Local Capital Projects Fund, and most importantly, Mass Works. As you can see from this chart, these, Easton has received critical and important funds from all of these programs in the last 10 or so years. Just as an example, the sewer installation at Five Corners that we were talking about, that's $1.5 million from Mass Works. And the upgrades at Main Street, which someone, a resident, mentioned earlier today, that's also $1.5 million from Mass Works. Unlike some communities that are intent on defying this law, perhaps because they can afford to do it, here in Easton, we really don't have that luxury, given some of the budgetary realities that we've discussed tonight. There is another important reason why we should comply, and that's because the law is designed to address what we all know is a severe housing crisis here in Massachusetts. Easton is a special place for a lot of reasons. I've seen it here tonight. It's special because of its people. It's special because of the culture that its people passed down from generation to generation. In order to preserve that culture, there needs to be some continuity. A critical ingredient of passing from one generation traditions to another generation are young people and young families. With the way things are going, without any change, Easton is going to be unable to attract young families in the future. There are a lot of stats out there about the housing crisis. You can pick and choose whichever one you want to look at, but one significant one is the fact that Easton has a median household income of $117,000. You've got new single-family constructions that are well over $1 million just to buy into this town. The numbers don't add up. That's not to say that multifamily housing is going to solve that crisis, and certainly not this proposal. This proposal, I can assure you, is not going to solve that crisis. However, even in small doses, it can't hurt. Hopefully, some of this has sounded familiar to at least some of you out there. If it does, that's by design. Over the past 18 months, the community outreach on this law has been extensive. The public feedback that we as a planning board have received has been detailed and constructive, and from my vantage point, it has been the primary driver behind the proposal that we're presenting to you tonight. We've presented to every town board and subcommittee. We've held countless public hearings. We've received public feedback from citizens in person, via Zoom, in letters, emails. We've conducted grassroots presentations and information sessions. We've done leafleting. As Stephanie will explain to you, based on all that feedback, when this, when these zones were originally proposed, it was far more ambitious than the one that you're seeing here tonight. But based on all that feedback, the proposal that you'll be voting on is aimed at achieving compliance with the law and really nothing else. There is a small buffer on the units that was built into this proposal, based on some best practices that we received feedback on from the state, just to avoid having to do this again in the event we're able to pass this tonight. But the model presented tonight is geared toward achieving compliance and nothing more. Stephanie?
Okay. So Bob really covered a lot of ground and a lot of what we did. He mentioned that over the past, he said 18 months. This actually began formally in, back in 2022, when the Department of Housing and Livable Communities, or it was the Department of Housing and Community Development, now Housing and Livable Communities, published guidelines for what this zoning needed to be and what the requirements were. And Bob just covered that. It requires that you have a district, 50 acres in total. It can be comprised of sub-districts, one of which has to be 25 acres contiguous in smaller sub-districts. And what we're proposing tonight is sub-districts. The Board of Selectmen, the Select Board, appointed an implementation committee to get this process started. In 2023, they started meeting, and they developed goals for what this zoning should look like. Basically, they wanted to make sure that, and just let me explain for a minute, that committee was comprised of volunteers that represented different municipal boards, like the Planning Board, the Conservation Commission, the Select Board, the Planning Board, Finance Committee, and Economic Development Council. And the first step they took was determining, yes, it's important for the town to comply with the law for the reasons that Bob just mentioned. There's significant funding tied to compliance that the towns benefited from. And then they developed goals for the zoning. They wanted to make sure that it contributed to the economic health of the community, that it responded to the housing crisis, which is the impetus of the law itself. There's a housing crisis in Massachusetts, and Easton is not immune to that. They wanted to make sure that the commercial districts in the town were protected and provided for mixed-use development, and that the areas that were identified for the district were consistent with walkable and mixed-use neighborhoods. So in areas, locate the district in areas where there are services, there are businesses, there are opportunities for people to live, work, play, and that are located near main transportation corridors, as well as within driving distance, reasonable driving distance to abutting communities where there are MBTA stations. And also, make sure that we're leveraging the infrastructure investments that the town has made. So they identified, at that time, that committee identified eight areas that had potential for the districts. That was evaluated by the Planning Board and reduced to three districts. And as Bob mentioned, they were significantly larger than what he just showed you a few minutes ago. The Foundry Eastman District, which should be on your left, included all the area along Robert Drive. So this is where Foundry Street meets Eastman Street. The property is along Robert Drive, as well as some parcels to the south. The Washington Belmont, which is the southeast corner of Washington and Belmont Street, included the areas that you see there. And North Washington, or the area along North Washington, included the area around the Roach Brothers Way, as well as parcels, land to the east. So Bob mentioned that we received, we held a lot of meetings. We held over 40 public meetings where people were informed on what this zoning was about, learned what was being required of the town, that this was a zoning initiative, it is not a building mandate, and also it gave an opportunity for people to respond. And we heard from over 100 people over the course of those meetings and events that we attended. And the initial district configuration, which was 121 acres and 18, had a total unit capacity of 1,800 units, was reduced to the 65 acres that Bob mentioned, with 972 total unit. And again, Bob covered this. We have the area around Avalon, which is off Robert Drive. You have the Belmont Street area, and then we have the area around Roach Brothers Drive. So at this point, it's important to note that by right zoning doesn't mean no control. The town has the ability, and the zoning proposes, that there are certain dimensional setbacks, setbacks, dimensional standards, like yard setbacks, the number of stories, building heights, and also green space requirements. And it's also important to note that this is being proposed, as Bob mentioned, this is not revolutionary, and it's being proposed as an overlay district, which means the underlying zoning continues to exist. But you just give a property owner or a developer the opportunity to choose whether to develop multifamily housing or to develop under the existing zoning. And as you can see, a lot of these areas were selected because they're already developed with this type of development, either mixed use or with the multifamily.
So in summary, this proposal resulted from a tremendous amount of collaboration throughout this community. After extensive community participation and feedback, we believe that we're presenting a proposal that addresses the community's wants and needs, one that will comply with this law, and one that, with any luck, will increase the tax base even if a little bit to ease some of the budgetary concerns that we heard about earlier tonight. This proposal will undoubtedly help Easton, because it will allow us to continue receiving some very important state funding for projects that we all know and have taken advantage of. But as Stephanie mentioned, this is not a revolutionary law here, and it was designed that way. The changes codify what already exists at Avalon. It allows some flexibility at Roach Brothers Way in the event redevelopment ever becomes economically feasible there, and it allows for a slight alteration with respect to commercial use requirements across the street from Stonehill. For all of these reasons, we request that Easton join the vast majority of communities that have addressed this law and have approved it. So we're asking for a yes vote on warrant Article 17. Thank you.
So before we get to comments and questions, I don't think we did the recommendations. So Select Board...
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and Zoning Board.
Planning and Zoning Board recommends.
Okay. Any comments, questions, or concerns relative to Article 17? We'll start over here.
Good eve, good evening, the residents of Easton. My name is Amy Mazol, and I live at 29 Mel Brook Lane.
My name is Trishian Ware, and I live at 5204 Robert Drive. We are students at Easton Middle School. My group and I are working on a civics project.
For our civics project, we are addressing the issue of affordable housing. We would like to speak tonight to urge you to support Article 17.
You might be asking, why should you care about affordable housing in Easton? You should care, because it allows for the needs of many families to be met here in Easton, but it will also benefit Easton itself.
Affordable housing can provide Easton of numerous positive opportunities. According to Habitat for Humanity, affordable housing will contribute to positive economic growth in towns such as Easton, allowing for tax revenue to grow and creating jobs.
Affordable housing can also increase the amount of local purchasing power in Easton. According to homesforall.org, you can help achieve this goal for Easton by voting yes on Article 17.
We also would like you to discuss this issue with your friends and family. Thank you so much for listening and your time.
Thank you, boys. Nice job. Very brave.
Hi, my name is Mickey Wolf, 27 Reynolds Street. I have been a resident for Easton for nearly a decade. I'm a member of the Planning Board and the Historical Commission. I've helped with various campaigns to benefit the town across the years, including the Blanche James Elementary School Project. I really enjoy volunteering my time to help this town however I can, because I believe that's what needs to happen in order for a place just to work right for folks. And also, I live in an apartment. I have sat through a number of planning board meetings where I've listened to homeowners in Eastern explain that apartments lower the quality of life in this town. In one meeting, an Easton resident told the audience that apartments don't count as homes, they're just places to live. I once had to console my child when she came home from elementary school crying because classmates told her she was going to grow up to be a criminal solely because she lived in an apartment. This doesn't happen in a vacuum. These ideas sprout in a child's mind because of the attitudes planted by adults. I'm saying all of this because there seems to be a persistent attitude among some folks in Easton, not borne out by any facts, that those of us who choose to live in apartments will ruin Easton's quality of life. However, the facts, as presented many times during those MBTA sessions, are clear. Despite apartment complexes being built in Easton over the past few years, Easton's population growth has slowed in the 21st century. More than four-fifths of Easton's homes are single-family homes. Allowing for the possibility of apartments, not even the actuality, just the possibility, under the proposed MBTA zoning affects just 0.3% of Easton's land. That's a pretty small amount. But what about the schools? Easton school enrollment, even with Avalon, Quaiset Commons, and Shovel Works coming on board in the past 15 years, has declined from 3,906 in 2010 to 3,401 today. This trend is mirrored across the state, as folks are deciding for a variety of reasons to have smaller families. Rental units in Easton actually have half as many kids as do the single-family homes. And apartments are a great option for folks looking to downsize and stay in their community, to stay near friends and near family. And they're also a great option to allow families to stay close even when their family structure changes. And crime? Despite the apartment complexes built in Easton, there has been no appreciable change in the crime rate. Easton is a safe place to live, and those of us who live in apartments appreciate this fact, too. The proposed MBTA zoning won't bring apartment complexes to this town tomorrow. It's not a mandate to build. What it does is bring the town in line with the law as decided by the state, and allows the town to be continued to eligible for grants that have brought over $5 million to this town over the past few years. That's $5 million that has improved the quality of life for all folks in this town. As Easton makes more efforts to intentionally celebrate diversity, it's growing stronger as a community, and it's a desirable place to live, as the 30% increase in home values over the past few years demonstrates. And with Easton being a desirable place to live, there are young families buying homes here, wanting to be here, to raise families here, to be part of the community here, like I did and like so many do. I know a lot of folks have feelings about apartments and those of us who choose to live in apartments, but feelings aren't facts, and the facts don't support them. As a board, we listen to what folks in Easton were saying about the MBTA zoning, and we work to create a plan that meets the requirements and not much more. This plan fits the community, the needs of the community of Easton now, and works to make the Easton much more accessible for folks in the future, too. It's a solid plan, and I plan to vote yes.
Hello, my name is Felicity Bird-Kagan. I live at 75 Union Street in Northeaston. Union Street has a speed limit of 30 miles an hour, and when we moved here, there was a "no truck" sign on Union Street. Today, as is in the recent past, 18-wheeler trucks have barreled down there well beyond the speed limit of 30 miles an hour. There have been two studies by Old Colony Planning and the Beto Group, 2005 and 2009, regarding the traffic on Union Street and Washington Street. It had been calculated that 13,900 cars, vehicle per day, have traveled on Washington Street North, and 6,500 vehicles per day have traveled on Union Street, well past the speed limit of 30 miles an hour. This proposed multifamily housing behind Roach Brothers does not factor in that behind Roach Brothers, there is a wetland that is a feeder root, continuous flowing water into waterways that join up with the Whitman Brook Water Management. These, the infiltration, the leaching field, the catch basin water will dump pollutants into these waterways and ultimately down to the Whitman Brook Waterway, to Langwater, to Shee pasture, and to the three wells on Quaiset that now have the PFAS treatment plants, the filter treatment plants. The United States EPA has reduced the PNAS levels down to four parts per trillion. Today, in Massachusetts, it's 20 parts per trillion. These treatment plants at Level Wells 1, 2, and 4A treat only to 20... These treatment plants at Level Wells 1, 2, and 4A treat only to 20 parts per trillion. So if you vote for this, you're going to be voting for more and more wastewater, infiltration water, catch basin, rock, salt, nitrogen, phosphorus, organic nitrogen pesticides down into the Brooks, the continuous flowing water that goes down to Whitman's Brook, ultimately polluting our well water. Thank you.
Thank you. So I believe under the modeling, we did in fact have to consider wetlands. I'll defer to the planning folks on that. But just to clarify on Wells 1, 2, and 4, the PFOS treatment media there does in fact treat down to meet the future U.S. EPA standard, it treats to non-detect. So I just want to be clear about that. And the capital budget funded treatment for Red Mill Road tonight, which will make sure Easton not only remains in full compliance with the state DEP standard of 20 parts per trillion, but that will make sure we're treated down to functionally zero anywhere that there is any about that. Thank you.
And Easton has to be in compliance with the United States Supreme Court, Sackett versus the EPA, that no longer can you dump infiltration water, catch basin water through continuously flowing water into Brooks or streams. They roll out wetlands and bernal pools, but as long as it's continually flowing, which it is from that wetland behind Roach Brothers, into the Brooks that flow into Whitman Brook Water Management, you're going to have a legal problem.
I just want to make it clear, this does not override the Wetlands Protection Act or the Local Wetlands Protection Bylaw. Both are still effective in this district. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Surhan. I have been a student of Easton. A lot of the teachers here might recognize me, I don't know. But I have been a student of Easton for a very long time. I've lived in Easton my whole life, and I really just want to remind everybody that this is a great town. It's not a bad town at all. We're all happy to live here. But I would like to just remind you guys that I am a healthcare worker, I'm a younger person, and I would absolutely have a horrible time trying to find housing if I wanted to live in Easton. I work in Boston, I drive over an hour every day just to go work in healthcare, but then I come back here every day, just because I love Easton, I love my family, and I love staying with them. But the reality is, is that people who don't have accessibility to housing in general have a hard time living in places like this. But even with families who have their kids who leave their homes, they also are stuck paying a large mortgage for a home that only houses two people when their home is, you know, empty. So to bring this idea of having multiple different areas in which people can maybe live is not a bad idea. It might not kill people to have a little bit more younger people in the area. I hope my existence doesn't hurt any of you, but I think it would be a good idea to bring people into Easton and bring a different ideology and a different pathway towards making this a little bit better. I know that Easton is beautiful as it is right now, and nobody says we want to change it, but we definitely want to bring a couple more younger generational people in here. But one thing that I would like to say is that if you are looking to bring people into Easton, we need Easton to be a place that people want to stay. And as a younger person who has lived here and grown up here and then gone out to Boston, Easton doesn't have much to offer for younger people. When it comes to like looking into places like Dedham where they have Legacy Place or places that people can actually walk around and enjoy, Target is a spot, but it's not a spot that people can actually enjoy and shop and go around and do things. So as a younger person, I would just love if you guys could possibly consider bringing a reason for younger people to come to Easton other than just housing. I would hope that you consider bringing a reason, like a nice area that could help reduce taxes for the town and bring revenue towards the town in other ways other than just the taxes. So thank you for listening, and I hope that you guys consider bringing more people that are hopefully as nice as I am, but yeah.
Hi, Kathy Kidd, 47 Center Street. As a fairly new member of the Planning Board, I just want to thank everyone who has put in so much time and effort over the past, what, 18 months to shape this plan. We had town officials involved, we had multiple volunteers from the Planning Board, we had residents who came to multiple meetings and shared their views with us. And with all of this effort and feedback, I think a very solid plan has come together, the one that you guys have presented here tonight. And in my estimation, it's very important for us to vote yes on this. And there's plenty of reasons already explained by Bob and by Stephanie. I mean, it obviously has the potential to grow our housing stock, it will keep Easton eligible for the various state grants and funds, and finally, it means we're going to be compliant with state law, just like so many other MBTA communities around us as well. So I fully support us voting yes on this. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Mark Carpenter, 12 Adam Street. So I'm going to address the other side of the story. So we're looking at a 972 total unit capacity increase. We all know that apartments and, you know, multifamily houses, they get a different tax rate, so it doesn't do anything to improve our tax rate or reduce the burden on resources. Anybody who knows anything about real estate knows it's an 10 to 18-year cycle. One of those pieces of the cycle is hyper supply. Unfortunately, right now, we're in a bad part of the cycle, so we're really suffering from some, you know, low availability of housing. That's going to turn around. Basically, what's happened with this is there's a lot of towns in the area who voted against it so that they can go back to the state and get a better deal. Basically, they don't want the state house to extort them over a political agenda. They know what the, you know, what the housing market is. So I urge that we vote no. We go back to the state like Milton and other towns and try and get a better deal, and if that falls through, I mean, we can always come back to this. But let's at least try and do something better. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to respond to the note about a different tax rate. There's not a different tax rate for apartments, and many of these multifamily developments, particularly Avalon, Avalon is the single largest taxpayer in Easton by a substantial margin. It's not even frankly close. Avalon, the construction of Avalon contributed nearly $1 million in new growth. That's more than most of the town does, every single other of the 8,000-plus parcels combined typically does in a year. That's not to say there aren't services associated with it, but it was an important part of new growth, and apartments do pay those taxes. As far as the legal ramifications of voting no and attempting to go back and bargain with the state, we have no reason to think that that's an option on the table. The Attorney General has been abundantly clear in writing and the press and with their actions in court against Milton. So I just want to caution the suggestion that, you know, there's this wave of communities voting no. I think it's somewhere between 10 and 12, when 60-plus have said yes. So we don't often get a state law that says you must do X, and then we say no and can bargain over it. So I just want to be clear about those risks. Thank you.
Meredith Keach, Old Foundry Street. I have a procedural question for Town Council, two parts actually. One, can we, and it's not to disparage for all of the time and effort and everyone's time here tonight, but might everyone consider tabling this vote to the fall while we watch other towns and see what happens? And two, if there were a no vote tonight, what specifically would be the financial impact? What type of punishment would we incur for going against the governor? Thank you.
Again, Jay Tellerman, Town Council. So procedurally on a vote to table to the fall, you could vote no on this, but we cannot technically push an article tonight for consideration in the fall. Town meeting procedure doesn't work like that. There could be a new article in the fall, but we can't accomplish tabling here and specifically add it to a fall agenda if we have a town meeting at all in the fall. In terms of the penalties there, and I would leave it to Connor to make an assessment as to what kind of money we could be losing by way of grants, but there's really two categories that we as council are concerned about when towns don't vote in favor of what the state is mandating. The first, there are three categories of grants that are specific to the statute that were referenced before in the initial presentation. In addition to that, other grants that the town has to receive go along a scoring model. And if a town has not achieved compliance with this, we're likely to score worse in the scoring because grants are competitive at the state level. So a big concern that we have is that in addition to three clear grant categories, including Mass Works, which the town has utilized at length, there could be other grants that we are not hearing about that we will fare worse in the competition for with communities that have passed the MBTA zoning.
Denise Higgins for New Pond Way. I've thought a lot hard getting up here to what I will say. There have been a lot of people that have been instrumental in putting this together, and I commend a lot of the people in front of you who have spent amazingly, an inordinate amount of time. This is not a great proposal coming from the state. The fact that it's called MBTA is really a misnomer. To say that it's going to solve our housing issues is also false. However, I don't want to be back here in the fall. Meredith, great thought, but I don't want to be back here, and I don't think we want to be dealing with this again in the fall. I have been watching every single town that has voted this down, from Milton to Marshfield to up north to our butter here in Foxborough. Some of these towns are already starting to face some reprisals. I don't think that the state or the AG is going to look fondly on some of these towns that have held out. What I do want to say is, the three locations that were very thoughtfully and hugely, and I mean enormously vetted, are not going to be very, they're not going to be areas where we are going to have to worry about immediate concern for development, or we are not going to have to worry terribly that this is going to make a huge impact on our town immediately. What has happened is, as was said, these are just codifying areas. For example, Avalon is already meeting the type of density housing at the current time, so for us to rezone it isn't going to do anything to Avalon. It's just that way now. Roach Brothers is an area, if we bring MBTA into our community, that it would be a town, an area of the town that we would see some development. But look what's happening at Roach Brothers. That's a very stable area. I don't see any point that that's going to revolutionize. And across from Stone Hill, if there's any area that's going to have any type of redevelopment, that school just went D1, and that area directly across from it is going to do what it's going to do. This puts us in a good situation. We don't have to come back here and fight this again in the fall. Please, please, let's get this over with and come back as a town. I'd like to move the question.
So our rules say when you speak, you can't then move the question. Okay, so, yeah, so it takes a two-thirds vote to call the question. All those in favor of calling the question, please raise your orange card. And all those opposed to calling the question, please raise your orange card, and the question is so moved. Okay, so now we take a vote. So in order for Article 17 to pass, we need a simple majority vote. All those in favor of Article 17 passing, please raise that orange card. And all those opposed, please raise your orange card. We're going to have to count. Sorry, guys. All of those in favor of Article 17, raise your card and stand up, or stand up, please. Thank you. Just hold that orange card in your hand while you stand up so we can take account. Simple majority, but it's really close, so. Okay, all the yes votes, all the yes votes can sit down. All the yes votes can sit down. Now we need the no votes to stand up, please. Thank you. Okay, okay, all the noes can sit down if you'd like to sit down. Thank you. Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, Article 17 passes by simple majority. It was, if you want to know, we have one article left, we have one article left. I see like mass exodus, but if you want to know the numbers, it's 218 to 167. We have one more article. Please don't leave, it'll be fast. Okay, Article 18. Go ahead, Dottie. I move that the town vote pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 82 to accept as a public way Lullaby Lane and to authorize the Select Board to accept deeds and easements with respect thereto as printed in the warrant under Article 18.
Check it.
By way of explanation, Lullaby Lane is a right-of-way that provides access to 11 residential lots in the Tanglewood II Residential Subdivision approved by the Planning and Zoning Board in 2022. Lullaby Lane was inspected recently by the Planning Department and Department of Public Works and found to be in good repair and in accordance with the as-built plans. The Select Board recommends. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends.
Planning and Zoning Board. Planning and Zoning Board. Any comments, questions, or concerns relative to Article 18? Okay, seeing none, I don't think. Seeing none? All those in favor of Article 18 passing, please raise those orange cards. I need a simple majority. All those opposed, please raise your orange cards. And Article 18 passes by simple majority.
Motion to adjourn.
I need a second. Thank you all so much for coming.
Thanks, everyone.